Morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, December 7th, 2022, meeting of the Lake Havasu City Planning and Zoning Commission. Would you please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Members Matthew Mitchell.
Here.
Gabrielle Midley.
Here.
David Diaz.
Here.
Susanna Ballard.
Here.
Joan De Zero, thank you.
Here.
Dane Hatch.
Here.
Paul Laird.
Here.
Tiffany Wilson.
Here.
Chairman Jim Harris.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, we have one absence today, so if we'd have Ms. Wilson, the alternate, come join us here at the Diaz. And Correspondence and Announcements, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I have no correspondence or announcements today.
Wow, okay. Minutes from the last meeting. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes from the last meeting? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We need a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, a second by Ms. Ballard, to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's go ahead and place our votes.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, let me just start by saying that this is a public hearing and there is a structured order to this proceeding. The city staff will present each item, there will be time for the commission to ask questions of the staff, and then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their case to the commission. That being done, we will then open the proceeding to the public for their questions and input. I would ask that anyone of the public that wishes to speak limit their trips to the podium and microphone to one only, keep all comments to less than three minutes, and to stay on point and not discuss subject matter that is not pertinent to the decision being considered here today. After public testimony is taken, I will then close the public hearing and bring the motion back to the table for city staff's recommendation, discussion amongst the commission, and eventually a motion to approve or disapprove. Let me further say that we have three issues here today for the same properties. As with all of the correspondence and copy letters we've received about these issues, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of duplication of your concerns to the commission and the hearing for these items. In the interest of time, if we start to get redundant with no new points being raised, I am going to call for anything new to be presented, and if nothing is new, I'm going to close the hearing and move on. So having said that, the first item on today's agenda is ID 22-3552. This is a request for a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 340, 350, 380, and 390, Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, Parcels A, B, C1, and C2, to change the future land use designation from resort-related to resort residential. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much. Before we get into this item, a little bit of general information and background about how the Grand Island Estates development came about. The planned development, which lays out all the uses for the Grand Island Estates, was approved in 1994. The developer and the city entered into a development agreement in 1996, which was supplemented in 1998 with a supplementary development agreement. Since that time, the development has been sold, so there are several different parcels of the development that have been sold to different developers. The development agreement included an automatic termination provision as to any lot that has been fully subdivided and individually leased or sold to the end purchaser or user. The subject lots in these items before us were sold to an end user for a project that was started but was never finished. Therefore, these properties are no longer bound by any development agreement for the Grand Island Estates. Now that you have a little bit of background about the property, the first item before is a minor general plan amendment, and then the next two items will be PD rezones, which actually established the zoning district. The general plan land use map provides a high-level general land use designation. It's not actual zoning. It helps to guide the decision-makers what type of potential zoning districts may be allowed. An example would be if there was a general plan land use designation of commercial, that would be the general plan, then the zoning underneath that could be different types of commercial zoning. It could be a C1, a C2, something like that. So the first item we're talking about would be a general plan. The next two items are the planned development rezone, which actually set the zoning districts. Again, the general plan amendment was the first step, and then the two planned developments will actually establish what the zoning is for the property. So with that, we'll get to the general plan amendment item. The subject property consists of four parcels, A, B, C1, and C2. Together, they measure about 23 acres, are vacant and undeveloped. They're located on the island at the northwest corner of Grand Island Estates Development, near the western end of Beach Comer Boulevard. Here's the zoning map. The subject properties are currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood, planned development. The properties to the north and the west are vacant Arizona state land and Arizona island body beach. The properties to the south and the east are zoned residential estates, planned development, and developed with single-family homes, some vacant lots, and Grand Island Estates Park. These are the existing residential developments. The general plan land use map designates the north and west areas as vacant Arizona land, and they have a general plan designation of resort-related island. And the property to the east is resort-related, and it's a mix of single-family residential and vacant lots. And then the abutting property to the south is designated open space parks, is part of the Grand Island Park. The RES, the residential, resort residential, is the land use designation of the existing residential developments. The requested resort residential land use designation allows primary uses such as mixed use and resort residential development and accessory residential use or structural uses. It's intended to provide opportunities for resort residential development, primarily on the island and along the shoreline. It also provides opportunities for innovative resort and mixed-use developments that differ from the historic residential pattern in Lake Havasu City in terms of overall density, types of housing, open space, and other amenities. Use of clustering, higher densities, and innovative techniques are encouraged in this general plan designation. The proposed uses comply with the residential component of the resort-related, to be the resort residential land use category. And the proposed general plan resort residential land use category is the same as the existing single-family developments on Grand Island Estates. Here's the existing development plan for the property. It's currently approved for the subject properties. It was approved in 1994. It includes up to a 70-foot-tall hotel resort with approximately 225 rooms. There are 45 residential casita units and approximately 50,000 square feet of commercial uses spread along the three parcels. The applicant is asking to amend the city's general plan designation from resort-related to resort residential to facilitate development of the residential uses of the property. The general plan is, again, the first step in this process. The applicant has also submitted separate requests to rezone portions of the property to the appropriate residential districts. The proposal includes two separate development areas. The areas are part of the existing planned development but are no longer included in the development agreement for Grand Island Estates. The one area outlined here in green is about 18 acres and includes about 54 detached single-family homes on individual lots. This area will be very similar to the existing residential area within Grand Island Estates. The second area measures about five acres, outlined in blue, and is proposed for multiple family development with a maximum density of eight units per acre, which would result in a maximum of 40 units in that development area. Here's a table that shows the existing approved planned development and then what's proposed. The request will eliminate the currently approved commercial, resort casitas, and resort hotel uses and replace them with about 45 single-family residential lots and a maximum of 40 multiple-family lots. This will result in only residential uses on the property. There will no longer be any commercial uses. Again, here's the existing planned development. The subject property is outlined in red. The existing planned development approved for Grand Island Estates also includes five residential subdivisions, here shown in green, that were approved for a maximum of about 400 lots, 402 lots shown on this plan. These five subdivisions are final-platted with only 342 lots established, which is 60 fewer than the 402 that were originally approved. The proposal, but one of the proposals before us will replace the approved 45 casita units in parcel B with a maximum of 40 multiple-family residential units, resulting in at least five fewer multiple-family units than what were originally approved with the Grand Island Estates project overall. It will also replace the 54 residential units that are approved, that are requested here for the single-family. So those 54 new units added to the existing 342 that are platted already equals 396 lots, which is less than the 402 that were originally approved. So it will reduce, result in a reduction of what was originally approved for that development. The Development Services Director, Public Works Director, Fire and Police Department Management Staff met and reviewed the proposed amendment and have no concerns with the development. It's determined that the property, or the project, is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the existing access to the island or the police and fire response times. There's also adequate capacity for sewer and water service for the development. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions? The applicant is also here if you have questions. Thank you.
All right, do we have any questions of staff by Commissioners? I'll start with one basic question. So Luke, in a nutshell, this is basically a request for a reduction in zoning, basically.
Yes, when we get to the zoning items, yes, they're asking for, there's, staff would consider this less of an impact on the area as far as the traffic and, yes, downzoning, if you will.
Okay. Mr. Laird, I see you reaching.
Right, thanks. Luke, can you explain the difference between a minor and a major amendment to the general plan and why this is considered a minor?
Yes, thank you for the question. Yes, a major amendment is anything that's within the originally-platted areas of five acres or more. In areas outside the originally-platted area, like on the island here, out in the north edge of town, out near Walmart in that area, in that area, those areas, there's a threshold of 40 acres. If it's over 40 acres, then it's considered a major amendment. In this case, it's less than 40 acres. It's outside the originally-platted area, so it's considered a minor general plan amendment.
Any other questions of staff? Mr. Diaz?
Yes. I don't know if this is a question for Luke or for Ms. Gary, but what is the normal process to change the general plan? Is there an Arizona statute that allows, can you explain that so we can get that on the record, please?
Sure. So yes, Arizona law outlines the requirements that are necessary to establish the general plan. And then there's also the city code that walks through the different types of amendments, so whether it's a major or a minor amendment. The state statutes specifically apply to the creation of the general plan and then every 10 years when it has to be updated in a major amendment. The minor process falls under the city code.
Any other questions of staff? Hearing none, is the applicant present? Would you like to come forward and make a presentation? State your name for the record.
Yeah, thank you. Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, staff. My name is Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. We're here representing both of these property owners today for all three of these actions. I put a little presentation together that, first of all, Mr. Morris did a great job, I think, of going through the history and illustrating what's going on here. So some of this will be a little redundant, but I wanted to walk you through it from our perspective quickly and talk about a few things. This is kind of the same presentation for all three items that we're going to talk about today, so I'm just going to run through it now, and then we can come back to it on the items in the future. Mr. Morris, if you'd go, thank you. As was described, we're dealing with two properties today that are kind of the northwest portion of the original master plan for the villages at the island. The rest of the island, the rest of this master plan development has been executed or is being executed as a variety of residential neighborhoods. As we know, the original plan for this, the planned development that is approved, and I want to stress that today, that this, what you see on that map there, and we'll talk about it in more detail, is currently approved. In fact, as I think was mentioned at one point in time before the recession, the last recession, a hotel actually broke ground and was started and then got abandoned. So the plan currently is approved to develop what you see there, and that includes a resort hotel component, up to 225 rooms, up to 70 feet in vertical height in the center of the project there, a whole series of casitas, which is really a multi-family, multi-unit development that had 45 units, as Mr. Morris described. Those are outlined kind of along the park and up against parcel D, which, as you'll see, is not much different than what's proposed today. And then a large commercial element over there on the west side of the property that had up to 50,000 square feet of commercial. So a very intense potential development, but it is approved. And that's important because, what I'll circle back on at the end, is that when this was approved, when it was approved in the past, things like access, access over the bridge, water, sewer, public safety, all those items were addressed when this master plan was approved. So we'll talk about that in a second. Mr. Morris, next slide. Again, the subject properties currently are four parcels that encompass this area. Again, parcel A, commercial, two resort parcels in the middle, and parcel B, the casitas that were mentioned. Mr. Morris? This item, obviously, we're talking about the general plan amendment. I don't need to read through the definitions here, but resort-related island is the current designation because of what we're proposing in terms of taking the density down, removing the resort component, removing the commercial component, going back to just residential uses, which are 100% consistent with the rest of the island development that's happened out there. The existing developments that are there, as Mr. Morris pointed out, are currently designated resort residential. And so because we are adapting to that same type of development pattern, our request today is to go to resort residential. Again, primary use is mixed-use resort residential development and the same designation as the rest of the island. Mr. Morris? We'll get into the zoning change next. It was touched on, but going from what is currently mixed-use neighborhood planned development to two different zonings, the larger piece being RE PD, which is consistent with some of the other developments adjacent, and the small piece going to RM PD, which is residential multi-family planned development, capped at eight units per acre, times five acres, that's a maximum of 40 units. What's being proposed here is very similar to the casitas that are already approved, and those are approved up to 45, we're actually coming down off of that as well. One other, we'll talk about that more in the zoning change. Mr. Morris? Again, current zoning, next slide. As we talked about, resort, resort, multi-family, and commercial. The proposed zoning that we'll get into, the larger portion of that being, go back one, sorry, the RE PD, which is consistent with some of the other developments along the park and buffering most of the other single-family neighborhoods that are out there, the patio home neighborhoods, and then a small portion, five acres, that's proposed to be residential multi-family planned development. Next slide. There's the plan that we'll talk about in a little bit that illustrates that. And at this time, I think I just kind of want to end with addressing some of the public concerns. We did hold a neighborhood meeting not too recently, not too far back out on the island. We had a lot of attendance at that neighborhood meeting. We heard the concerns of the public. Most of those concerns that I believe you'll hear today revolve around kind of the same topics. Staff addressed these a little bit. But again, the biggest thing to keep in mind here is there is an existing plan that's approved for a 225-room resort hotel, up to 70 feet tall, 45 casitas, and 50,000 square feet of commercial use. The proposed development plan that we'll talk more about has 54 single-family lots and 15 multi-family lots, again, maxing because of the density requirements and the density restrictions that we're putting on ourselves, maxing that out at 40 residential multi-family units that are being proposed. A substantially less overall impact on a lot of fronts. Traffic, we'll talk about today. With that reduction in intensity and that reduction in density, you're going to have less traffic. Any engineer will point, any traffic study would show that. You're going to have less trips per day. A lot of the homes that are being, that are on the island and that will be built here are second homes. They're not here all the time. Those trips are not consistent. Overall, a lot less impact to the island and to the bridge from a traffic standpoint. And again, keep in mind, the current plan that's approved, okay, that was studied on the front end. So it was anticipated that the traffic would be there going to this resort hotel, to the commercial uses. So at the end of the day, you're seeing a reduction in traffic impacts. Same with utilities. The offsite utilities are in place, the water's there, the sewer, the treatment plan and the infrastructure to get the sewage off the islands in place. Again, new plan ultimately will result in less water use, less fire demand for water, and less sewage, which takes a burden off of the infrastructure that was already planned to satisfy the needs of the larger plan. Public safety, you heard staff talk about as well, same thing. They're already there, they already deal with the access, and they already are aware of what's going on. The residential demand on that should be less than what is currently approved. So just wanted to talk about those public concerns on the front end a little bit. I'm sure we'll get into it more today. With that, I'll conclude my presentation. Happy to answer any questions of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. Do we have any questions of the applicant by Commissioners? Anybody at all?
I have a question.
Ms. Ballard?
The current general plan designation under resort-related island includes medium-to-high density residential, such as condominiums, townhouses, and patio homes. Why would you then necessarily need a zone change?
Well, the zone change and the general plan amendment are two different things.
Right.
The general plan amendment is because of the single-family use and the larger lots that are proposed as part of the single-family use.
Thank you.
And again, with that single-family use, that 18 acres being larger single-family lots, again, trying to be consistent with some of the other neighborhoods that are there, and those ours, they have the same, both the same general plan designation and the same zoning designation that we'll talk about later, but it's for the larger single-family use.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now open this item to the public. I'm sure there are people that want to speak on this. Anybody? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Frank Hayes.
I'm sorry, what was your last, what was your last name?
Hayes, H-A-Y-E-S.
Thank you.
I'm a retired battalion chief for Long Beach Fire Department, and I currently am a professor that teaches fire science courses in Long Beach also. This proposal is too risky in which to approve. I've heard them downplaying the fact that they're going to make the proposal a lot smaller. It doesn't matter. At this point in time, the island is overcrowded as it is today. Your number-one concern is public safety and welfare. It's going to affect life, property, and the environment if this proposal goes through. Let's use this room as an example, okay? I just looked at the occupancy load, 130 people. It's getting pretty crowded in here. Let's add just a little bit more. Let's add 10%, 20%, whatever you want to call it, okay? Let's eliminate exits. Let's only have one exit, okay? Hypothetically, a fire occurs. Let's also bring your loved ones and your family in here, okay? Then it makes it real. Some of us are going to get out, some will not get out. People will die. Let's talk about the effect of needing more services. If you have more people on the island, two heart attacks happen, they're going to have access problems getting on, maybe one paramedic unit gets there, they save one, the other one does not survive because they cannot gain access onto the island, and even trying to evacuate is going to be very difficult, okay? So that's a real issue. You're downplaying it, I've heard this, downplaying it. We're making a plan that's going to be smaller than what is already approved. It doesn't matter, it's already too crowded. As a fire chief, chief officer, I've done countless incidents where overcrowding and blocked exits have caused fatalities. And even in my fire science courses I teach, which I taught last night, and I had to get here this morning for this, I teach them about incidents that occur where fatalities happened from overcrowding and lack of access, egress in and out. The fact is, there will be lives lost that may not be accountable by statistics, but the fact is, what I just laid out to you, it will happen, guaranteed, that's a fact. I heard the staff study report, nobody has concerns. As a past fire chief, I would never have approved this, much too dangerous. There needs to be a second bridge before any construction occurs. So what will happen if this does get approved? Appeals will be immediately submitted, there'll be, we have a petition, and information circulated on the island, which will continue, and then we're going to bring it to the city. The entire city, this is a city issue, it's not just an island issue. Everyone that goes on the island, uses services, the marina, will be affected by the adverse traffic. Anyone who approves this decision will ultimately have the burden of responsibility for any and all adverse outcomes that occur from this decision. It is your obligation to basically do the will of the people, not your own, here. Listen to the people. There's 500 signatures already against this issue. The city, I'm sure, will not be happy about increased traffic, not having public safety access, or even just getting on and off the bridge. No new construction basically is the issue. It's not downplaying, hey, we're making a smaller project, look at this, we're only going to give you 54 houses instead of this big old 70-foot hotel. That's not the issue. The main issue is no new construction prior to a second bridge. You have two of my letters, which I can't cover all in three minutes. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to assist you in this decision process. Thank you very much.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you live on the island?
I do.
All right.
Of course. I do live on the island, and like I said, I just have the concern that, you guys know, if you live in a city, certain times of days and seasons, that bridge is both ways. So when we talk about fire access, we do opposing traffic, right? But we can't do opposing traffic because that bridge is going to be basically stuck with cars on either side. There's been, there's been a line all the way to where the old Kmart was before, going into the marina with boats and cars trying to go in. There's no way they're going to have access to get fire apparatus on or paramedic services based upon different times of the year and seasons.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? Mr. Laird?
So, without having a second bridge.
Right.
Would there be another recommendation you would make for easing the life safety issue you see?
Well, that's a good point. I really feel that, you know, you look back at the documents, which I've researched, there was apprehension in the 70s about doing any type of construction, because they were concerned about this issue even back then. Now, when the staff study comes out now and there's no concerns, that's kind of interesting to me because now we're 25 years later. So I guess my answer to you would be, I'm pretty much dead-set in the fact that I don't believe there should be any new construction prior to a second bridge, giving an alternate exit and at a remote location, because that's the whole criteria. If one is blocked, you can go to a different location and gain access off or on the island. So I think the bottom line is, there needs to be a second bridge. And I understand that there's money allocated for it, but again, I'll believe it when I see it, right? There's money, but hey, it's going to take a while. We've been talking about this for 20-plus years, right? About getting a second bridge. So I'm sorry about my long answer to you, but my answer is, I don't believe any new construction prior to a second bridge.
Do you feel vulnerable yourself right now? You moved onto the island.
Today, right now, today, not so much, okay? Because it's, you know, it's winter time, it's good. Snowbirds are coming in, we know that. The elderly are going to need more services, right? So that's a good point. So do I feel vulnerable? I actually kind of do, because you know what? The elderly are coming in to the islander and the beachcomber, calls for service. I hope I'm in good shape, I'm not going to have a heart attack, but guess what? Somebody has a heart attack at the islander, there's paramedics going there. I need it. Where's the next engine and paramedic unit coming from? They're not coming from my nearest fire station, they're coming from a remote location. Hopefully, they're not on a res-. Hopefully, they're not on a response, right? So if I, do I feel vulnerable? I do. Not as much as I would during different times of years where access is a little bit harder to get on and off.
But that could be anywhere in the city, not just the island.
It could be, that's correct. But you're adding more of a population to the city already that, again, seventy-five, you know, nineteen seventy-five was, you know, an issue then, but now we're twenty-five years later, population's increased by forty percent, right? So you don't have enough fire, fire apparatus or paramedic services, and I haven't even addressed the PD issue, right? Because I'm not waiting for some police officer to come up here and talk about that. So what happens if there's an assault? Somebody breaks in your house? Can you get an officer on the island quick enough during certain types of the year? I don't think so.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Ms. Wilson.
Are you proposing with the no new construction that any homes currently that are under construction or any permits that haven't been, permits that haven't been pulled on any of the vacant lots, just stop now until this is addressed?
I, I actually, no, I don't think that would be fair. I believe that they've already been approved up to the, the current development, I think it's Monticello and Descana, I get those both confused, but they, they're in production, they're large houses, and they've already been approved. I'm just concerned when I look at that, and I understand, okay, here's one thing I want to make clear, too. What they're proposing usually may not happen, correct? That's historically true, that, hey, we're going to do this, and then they rechange it, and then before you know it, instead of, you know, fifty-four residential houses, they have it, and now it's a hundred and eight. So I am not, I am not proposing that all, all new construction stops that's already been approved for development, no.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Morris, I want to ask you a question, too. Mr. Morris, how many homes are on the island right now? Do you know?
As far as actual homes, I don't have an exact count. I know the number of lots out there now that have homes is around three hundred and forty. So of those, I'd roughly say probably close to eighty or ninety percent of those lots are, have homes on them.
Okay. And just for clarification for the public also, so the state legislature here in Arizona just recently approved with the help of our state Senator Sonny Borelli and Leo Biassucci, our representative, that they are going to do a study, I put, I think, I think it's five million dollars, a study to see the feasibility if we need a second bridge. I think a lot of people think we do. And keep in mind that Bullhead just built a basic little bridge in Bullhead, it cost them fifty million dollars. So it's not cheap, but I think everyone does realize a bridge is needed, but they're going to do a study, typical, right, to find out if it, if it really is, so. But that is already been approved, it's in the budget for twenty twenty-three, just want to make sure everyone, I saw some of the correspondence that I was receiving, and I don't think that was clear to some people. So just want to make sure that was, that was up to, up to date.
Any other questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Just one last comment. So I concur, you know, there, there needs to be new studies undertaken. My understanding is the studies, the last were done twenty-five years ago. So, you know, we've got more people living on the island or the beachcomber, we have more, more homes that have been developed, we have bigger vehicles, we have bigger boats, we have bigger RVs. So those staff studies that were done back then don't really apply today's larger vehicles, boats, and all the construction and, and people living on the island, per se, twenty-five years later.
So it's okay for everybody that's there now, but those that are undeveloped?
No, okay. So you're right, I'm concerned. I think there's a problem right now. I think there's an issue now. I think there should be a second bridge now. I, I think before anything else occurs, definitely a second bridge.
Thank you.
My opinion.
Starting to get a little off-topic on the bridge, but let's, thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Anybody else?
I have one question. When you made your decision to purchase your property on the bridge, did you give consideration to the fact that there's only one bridge?
To be honest, no, I did not really even consider that. I didn't really think about it, but I've been there now for going on eight, nine years, and I've seen, I used to sit in my backyard and look at the beautiful lake, and like, before I knew it, there was a two-story behind me, and then houses all around me. I was like number four on the island. So it wasn't like something I really thought about until like, whoa, what just happened here? And then, then it started to get overcrowding and more and more. It gets to be at the point where, we, we all know on the island, we're not going off on Saturday and Sunday. You go to the grocery store like seven AM or you go on Thursday, because you're not going off Saturday or Sunday. So that's, that's really a good question. I did not really take that into consideration when I did purchase the house, but now with seeing more and more of the traffic, it is a major concern of mine now, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Okay, you're welcome.
Oh, Ms. Medley, I'm sorry.
I, I have a question. And this may be more in terms of a legal question, because it's already been zoned for the resort.
Right.
So moving forward, how would that impact the whole conversation? Because that's already in place.
What do you mean?
How would we address that? As already being?
They can already be that.
Yeah, and they could start building.
They can start tomorrow.
Now, and as far as what's approved, so they're asking to change what the approved uses are out there. So as far as what exists for today, it, what's approved is out there and there's, it, it could move forward at any time.
So what's already there is, is the issue, I guess, because now we're saying, and I, I concur with everything you've said, because I agree, and the growth here has been substantial. I don't know when our last traffic study was done. I do understand through the.
Do we have an answer on that? The last, last traffic study, the last environmental impact study, the last sewer and water study?
That was done during the development agreement in ninety-four, ninety-seven?
Ninety.
There was a traffic study done in ninety-seven, my understanding. Again, there's a memorandum of, of, of understanding with the state for some funding to move forward here for new study. For, in fact, engineering staff is preparing a proposal right now for a feasibility study to go out, to get quotes for a feasibility for a second bridge. So there's projects going on. Obviously, something from nineteen ninety-seven is outdated. It could be updated, and what we would have now through this new feasibility study would certainly update and make it modern and make it timely, traffic impact and analysis study for the second bridge. So the development as it was proposed and approved back in ninety, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-seven, is all predicated on the development moving forward as it was approved. So again, as your question, as far as the traffic study, there's one from ninety-seven. I don't, not aware of one from newer than that, but there's going to be a major study moving forward here in early.
When a traffic study is done, they take into account the density, which they did in this case.
Right.
Including the higher density of the existing proposed development.
Right.
And they, they count the trips per day, that sort of thing. I'm sure most of that has not changed. A new study would just update the data as to the existing people or developed properties on the island. So the traffic study, nothing's changed as far as the, the access. Traffic study would probably come out to be about the same.
Respectfully, I would disagree. I believe that in ninety-seven, and, and here's what I have, the data I've looked at, they did it on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, which doesn't indicate the reality of, of reality of the traffic being on Saturdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, or during holiday times and, and periods. So ten, they're supposed to be done every ten years. It's in documentation. Last one, ninety-seven. Where's the two thousand and seven? Where's the two thousand and fourteen? And so on. So I respectfully disagree. I don't think that the outcome would be the same, because all you got to do is sit out there on a Friday or Saturday during holiday peak periods, and, and you're going to see thousands of vehicles on there, or not even trips. So I know you talked about trips, not even the trips, the amount of people just stuck, not even moving on and off the island, because they're stuck. They're stuck on that, the intersection right there at the, at Chevron and, and CVS, because they're not getting on or off. Because it's going to, it's, it's, it's bad just even trying to make a left-hand turn there. So I respectfully disagree. I think a new traffic study, impact study, environmental impact study need to be undertaken before anything moves forward. You can't use data from nineteen ninety-seven and think it's going to be the same in two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, when it's actually going to be starting to be developed.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Morris.
If I may, the speaker's brought up many reports, many instances about weekend traffic events, and traffic issues on the island during special events and weekends. Our emergency responders, the chiefs have plans in place, they preposition responders on the island in anticipation of any issues that might come up during big weekends and special events. So the bridge has been in there, in place for fifty years. We've been dealing with the one access to the bridge as far as emergency responders and that sort of thing for fifty years now. Our police and fire departments have it down, they, they know what to expect, they are prepositioned, they are ready to go and to serve and protect the people out on the island. So that's part of what our discussion was when we met with the police and fire and the public works and development services, and that's come, based on those meetings and that information, that's where they're saying, they're not concerned that this is going to reduce the service to the island. So I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. One, my, my, my point to that is, I've been involved in that, Long Beach Fire, the Long Beach Grand Prix, Long Beach Marathon, prepositioning units inside the racecourses. That's an issue. Once they leave that racecourse, they can't get back on because of traffic. You can, you can preposition as many people as you want. Once you use up those resources, they're done. So you can put a paramedic unit on the island for whatever event you have, but once they leave, how are they getting back on? And if you have multiple calls for service, only that one unit's going to be for one response. Now you've got a second heart attack, you've got a traumatic injury, will not suffice. Prepositioning isn't effective and will not solve the problem.
Mr. Hayes, I'm going to ask you to step aside for a moment, let Mr. Toonam and talk.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jeff Toonam, Development Services Director. Just to address Mr. Hayes's question there, if you notice the bridge, we added, there's three lanes now. It originally used to be two, to address those issues. So on those special events or those big weekends where the traffic does back up, that's why the third lane was added, because we can shut down the middle lane and use it for emergency access only. So we can have one lane coming on, one lane coming off, and the middle's shut down for emergency access accordingly. So that, that is just a little history on that, that's why there is three lanes on the, on the bridge right now, and the two coming off, so we can get people off the island faster and one going on. So I just wanted to bring that up. I just wanted to, to touch base maybe on just the fire service. There, the fire department right now is going through an operational study. It's almost done, it's in final draft right now, and when that study comes out, you'll find that Station Five, where it's placed right now, is adequate to service the island. The island, the data up to November of this year for twenty twenty-two shows that the island, the calls on the island equivalate to three percent of the calls the fire departments ran in the city. So it's three percent of the calls. The response times to the island are four to six minutes, which are within the standards. That'll be shown in the, in the study coming out as well. So when we say that staff doesn't have a concern with this development, it's because it's, it's ninety-four homes. Now, I agree, when state land starts opening up and we have more acreage and that gets sold and start developing, yes, there is going to be concerns for that. And that is why our Senator, Representative Biassucci has got a bill and got funding through the state to do these feasibility studies, and, and they are needed, and we agree they are needed, but for this item before us today, a hun, ninety-four homes is, is not warranted to stall, to put in a second bridge, because we feel that these ninety-four homes will not affect the city's services for those reasons. Hope that kind of answers some questions, and the, the, Mr. Hayes also equilated the island to a, to a outdoor stadium or a building or a structure. I'm a certified building official, so I've been in the building codes and whatnot, and that's a structure? This is not a structure, this is, this is property. I'm sure he is aware that if you are in a structure, there's provisions, if you can't provide exits, you can provide safe dispersal areas that are fifty feet away from the structure and whatnot. On the north side of the island, there's almost four hundred and twenty-one acres of undeveloped land, that's more than fifty feet away from any one of these subdivisions. If they did catch on fire, if there was a catastrophe, they could go to the safe dispersal area. So if we wanted to look at it like a structure, then, then we could use that as an example for the exiting and, and whatnot. So just wanted to bring that to your attention as well.
Thank you, Mr. Toonam.
You're welcome.
Starting to get a little off, off course here a little bit, but let's move on. Anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Anybody at all? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Chad Nelson, last name is spelled N-E-L-S-O-N. A couple issues with this item, and I think, I think over time, you know, this parcel is, these items are getting better, closer to something that should be approved. But I'd like to ask the commission if, if they actually have a PD in front of them. We have a really nice PowerPoint, but do they have a PD in front of them that shows fifty-four residential lots? Do they have a PD in front of them that shows fifteen residential multifamily lots? Is there a plan in your item that you can look at? The, the Planning and Zoning Commission is accustomed to looking at a plan when it comes to PDs, where you can see parking spaces, structures, ingress, egress, trash enclosures, landscaping buffers, all of that stuff. Does the commission have a plan that they can look at? The commission typically picks apart these plans. They look at the parking items, they look at the, the trash enclosures, they look at all this stuff. Would you really consider passing a PD without a plan? Earlier, Mr. Morris stated that the termination of this agreement, which nobody knew about, nobody on the island knew about it, it slipped through a city council meeting on May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and was voted on unanimously, there was not a single comment, which is surprising, because this is obviously a controversial issue.
Mr. Nelson, may I interrupt you there and, and refer to, or defer to Ms. Gary?
Well, let me finish first, okay? So the, when Mr. Morris stated that the termination of that agreement happened, he, he stated that it was terminated because of a sale, okay? And let it reflect in the minutes of this meeting, that the city council meeting said that it was terminated by, in the, the development agreement based on the term. And it was stated in the city, city council meeting that the term had expired. The owner approached the city and asked for the development agreement to be removed, and they removed it in a city council meeting. So we have contradicting issues here, which I don't think is legal. It also says, according to term, that the only way it could be removed if there, if there was never a building permit, permitted. We know that there was a hotel that was being built on the site at one time. So I don't think that it was done legally, and I think that I'm going to recommend to you and to city council that, that agreement, the termination of that agreement be reversed.
At this point, I am going to interrupt you. Ms. Gary, would you like to address that?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commission members. So under the supplementary development agreement that was entered into in nineteen ninety-eight, there are a couple terms underneath there in which that development agreement automatically terminates. It doesn't require any action by any parties. We were approached by the developer because they wanted to record in some sort of way the recognition of their termination, but I'll, I'll discuss with you exactly what those termination terms are. As far as what Luke said earlier, that's my fault. I didn't explain to him fully yesterday when we quickly briefed before this meeting, so what Luke is saying is true to partial of it, but I'll go into greater detail of, of what I mean by that. So in section fifteen F of the supplementary development agreement, the term of the agreement shall automatically terminate on the thirtieth anniversary of the execution of this agreement. So the whole development agreement, no matter what has happened, will terminate in twenty twenty-eight. So that's one way that it terminates. Another way that it terminates is that in the event the developer or any successor in ownership to any portion of the property fails to obtain a permit for development of any improvements to the property, or on or before fifteen years from the date of this agreement was lax executed by a party heretofore, the agreement shall automatically was last executed by a party heretofore, the agreement shall automatically terminate. So that's another way that it automatically terminates. The third way is termination upon sale to the public. And under this section, which is 15H, the agreement shall terminate without the execution or recording of any further documentation or instrument to any lot which has been fully subdivided individually and not in bulk, sold or leased for a period of longer than one year or sold to the end purchaser or user thereof. And thereupon such public lot shall be released released from and no longer be subject to or burdened by the provisions of this agreement. So with respect to the property in which the hotel was began to develop, that's been that's terminated under the termination upon sale. It was sold to the final person. They started developing it. The development agreement no longer applies to that section. When we're talking about the other sections where the the commercial, kind of the strip commercial was applicable to, that falls under 15F where we're talking about where they failed to obtain a permit for development of any improvements to the property on or before 15 years from the date of the agreement, which would have been in 2013.
Okay.
So I would I would advise you to read the agreement like like she just read it to you and determine whether there's some legal interpretation there. Because I could tell you that is there anybody on the island that knew it was removed?
Whether they knew or whether they knew or not, and it's in the agreement, we just had our legal representative read the terms of the agreement.
Which is fine. I think it's open to legal determination, additional legal determination.
But that's not to be done here at this.
Right, right. So but you are making a decision today, and I would advise you to read it before you pass this, because I think it's open to additional legal interpretation. So and it wasn't stated correctly in the first place. The the biggest thing today is we've 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 seen a lot of items that have passed. And I'm going to I'm going to go to one item that you guys probably are familiar with. But 120 Park Avenue was passed in October of 2018. The same applicant came up here and said that that the going from C1 to Island Body Beach, that this new development would is required to have accessory units for restaurant components and retail components and condos and hotel. What you see there in Extrary Park is one giant hotel. Okay, promises made and promises that were not kept.
Go ahead and try and wrap up.
In addition, the that building was supposed to be built in blocks to provide view corridors. And there was a maximum of 200 feet in width for that building. That building is 280 feet wide, is 40% wider than is allowed. So I want I want the commission to be very careful when they're looking at this item, that whatever you see on a PowerPoint or whatever, like Mr. Toonaman said, there the last traffic report was done in 2005. There is one that's done. It just hasn't been published yet. I think this is getting close to to becoming something that everyone would accept, but it's not there yet. How can you pass a PD without seeing a plan? And that's all my comments. And I do have this packet, which I'll give to you guys. So you know that everything I'm saying is 100% true.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. So anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record. Oh, we have somebody coming up already behind you.
Hi, my name is Debbie Young. I've been a resident of the island for six years.
Would you pull the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
I just wanted to talk to you about how this new proposal is in no way in line with what the original vision was for the island. As we know, this was originally designed.
You need to get closer to the microphone.
It was originally designed as a mixed use of both commercial and residential. And this commercial was going to provide us other services like retail restaurants that would give back to the island and create a better fabric and environment to live in and to visit here in Lake Havasu. This new proposal in no way shows that. It's only going to create a sea of tract homes. I can't imagine that this was the vision that was created when that island was put in place. And if this is approved, I think that you're only giving the needs of a single developer rather than looking at the needs of an entire environment and the entire community. In addition to that, the original planned agreement is requiring to have studies done every 10 years for all the infrastructure and for all of the traffic. Those studies, as we know, have not been done every 10 years. So I'd like to ask you, how can you approve something like this without these studies being done? As you know, our traffic has increased significantly in the last several years. Since 2020 alone, the boating community has increased huge. So you can't say that the studies that were done in the 90s apply to what was being done now. So I would implore you to really take this all into consideration very seriously before you consider approving any new developments here on the island.
Thank you. Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, ma'am.
Good morning. Just I'm a resident on the island and.
Your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Bob. Last name is Strasba.
Thank you.
Resident on the island, just a few comments. And I don't think we're going to stop progress entirely here. I think the major concern is the density of the project. And this is my personal opinion, the 54 home proposal, if it's more detailed, shows less density. I think the major concern is the multifamily housing out there, VRBO, short-term rentals that might be used and contribute to traffic. The condos on the island now, I've talked to some of the residents, are used for short-term rentals, and it creates a nuisance and congestion that is not part of the island. That island in the last few years have really become, I think, a jewel for the city. The walking path is used a tremendous amount. And it's a if you live there, you notice that people travel from outside of the state. It's a vacation spot. They want to see the bridge, and they drive around the island. And the residents come out to use the island. And if the density is too high, that's going to detract from what we have out there. Again, my personal opinion, I'm not representing the group as a whole, just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You have a question? Ms. Wilson?
As to the short-term rentals, I mean, you understand a hotel is a short-term rental, right? And so the they're not proposing to build a hotel. But if the zoning doesn't change and with the casitas that are already there, I mean, there isn't anything we can do to limit a developer, what their rights to their property are, right? So if the the current stays the way that it is, you'll still have the casitas and you'll have a hotel that does have daily fluctuations.
My opinion is that hotel would never be built today. Permits have expired. It would not be built. So relying on the old adage of if you don't accept us what we're proposing today, you're going to have a hotel, I don't believe that would ever happen. So this wouldn't be viable.
We're hoping that this just stays vacant and nothing's ever built.
My personal opinion, I'm I'm about progress, and I understand the tax tax revenue with the city. And I think a development in line with the rest of the island would be acceptable. The multifamily lots is not in line with the rest of the development. I I think there just has to be some common ground that the resident islands, along with the city, has in mind. And I don't think multifamily lots are a part of it. And which was brought up earlier, I would like to see a more detailed plan of what's proposed before this gets passed.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Anybody else? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
My name is Agnes Deason, and I live at 700 Malibu Drive. So about three and a half years ago, I remember the developer was standing here before you. And he didn't have plans, detailed plans then. And I'm thinking, he's had three and a half years to come up with a plan. And it was you, Jim Harris, and you were very gracious that day. What you said, and I believe this was your exact words, is we have a better vision for the island. When you look at what's going on in the island and the revenue that it's being brought in, the Monticello, our last meeting over at the boathouse, I asked, I believe it was this gentleman right here, the developer, another gentleman in the Monticello who's developing his house to over $2 million, says, I have some concern about the multifamily units. And so when I asked this gentleman behind me, and I don't know your name, I said, I'd like to know what you would do if that was your property. And he said, I would never find myself in that position. And I remember those exact words because it was such an insult to me as a resident who lives there full time. And really quick about the traffic, I live in the Raceway. 700 Malibu Drive is right on Malibu and Beach Comer. I've seen at least six accidents in three and a half years. One lady actually got hit in my intersection and was helicoptered out of here. The damage was so much onto her. So again, it's the integrity of the island. It's not that we want to obstruct our views, but to put a dense population, and he said, we'll put like maybe an ice cream parlor. Well, is that liquor store ice cream parlor? What are you bringing here? So again, I think that everybody in this room really, really resists what's happening here because it's a slip and easy kind of thing. I know we need development. I'm married to a general counsel of the big-time developer. So I'm all for making the island magnificent, because let's face it, it's a very special, special piece of land in Havasu. There's nothing like it. So I just want to support what's already happening out there. So thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, hearing none, I'll. Do we have one more?
Good morning, Commissioners and city staff. I'm Greg Clark, Trinity Land Development. I've been involved with this project since it very first started. We bought two of the parcels from Jim Ruhl when he was owner of Diamond Key Master Plan Community. So I've been through this with the city. My first question for Luke, has Stuart Schmeling discussed this project with you?
Pardon me?
Has Stuart Schmeling discussed this project with you?
I think we've had discussions just in passing.
Okay. All right, thank you. You've discussed, or you made a statement earlier that the development agreement terminates with the end user. Are you stating that Jim Ruhl is the end user?
I think I'll have to address that city attorney. Thank you.
As far as the parcels that are owned by Mr. Ruhl, those ones fall under the termination after 15 years of no development, and then it automatically terminates.
Okay. So if the parcels, I own Monticello, if they haven't been developed in 15 years, I can change that to something else?
If you haven't received, I'll read it.
Okay.
So it says, notwithstanding foregoing, the developer's rights and obligations here under May, oh, no, I'm so sorry. I apologize. Notwithstanding the foregoing, in the event developer or any successor in ownership of any portion of the property fails to obtain a permit for development of any improvements to the property on or before 15 years from the date of this agreement was last executed by a party heretofore, the agreement shall automatically terminate. So if that's applicable to you, then yes, it would automatically terminate.
Okay. Luke, question for you. You've commented about the 342 existing lots and adding 54 lots. Are you combining those into the 402, or are they two completely separate issues?
Trying to get an approximation of number of residential lots. The the plan that's the plan development that's approved shows 402 lots that are available for that, existing Grand Island State's residential area. My count was like 342 lots that are actually there now. And so I'm comparing that 342 to the 400 and find there's about 60 fewer lots than the than this 400 that were approved. And the request here is one of the planned development rezones is to have about 54 lots. So I'm just trying to compare that to the overall density, the overall number of lots that were originally approved, and number of residential, single-family residential lots that are proposed, and trying to draw a correlation between the two and find that they're roughly actually a little bit less, the number, fewer number of lots with these 54. That's that was the intent of that.
Okay. So as Kelly just said, after 15 years, we can redo our lots. I'd have to go through planning and zoning, correct? So when Trinity purchased Parcels D and E, we purchased the rights to 108 lots. It's on your map. So I can go now, and I can add another 47 lots to mine because I have those rights.
You have to remember, there's two, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but there are two layers. So we have the development agreement that sits on top of the development, and we have the planned development that sits on top of the development. And so both of those have to work in conjunction.
Yes.
Okay.
I understand that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to say if there is a limit of 400 houses, I haven't given up my rights to those 47 other houses. So I just want to make sure that you're saying that Jim's new 54 lots would be in excess of the 402 if I re-subdivide my lots, since it's after 15 years. You're going to be exceeding the 402 houses.
I don't know about after the 15 years, but if you were to re-subdivide your properties, it seems like it would fall under the previously approved planned development. So that seems to be logical.
Okay, so I just want to clarify that. Jim, have we met before in front of city staff regarding developments on the island?
Yes, we have.
Did you have a client that owned two lots that wanted to marry them?
I did.
And city staff said that could not happen, correct?
At the time, that's correct.
And the owner of those lots, he is the end user. He's not a developer or someone that's going to do something else to lots.
As far as I know.
Okay, so city staff told us at that point.
For the record, that project didn't go forward, and I had nothing to do with it.
Correct. That's absolutely right. We did meet with city staff, and they said nothing could be changed on the island unless all the owners voted on it. Chad's already said in 2019 that this was pulled out. The hotel site was pulled out before 15 years. So how in one instance where, you know, Jim had a client, he's the end user, had lots, could not simply marry two lots? City staff was 100% opposed to it. Trinity was opposed to it because of the development agreement. But then you can pull a whole 23 acres out of the development agreement without most people knowing about it.
There was no determination at that time that those two lots were terminated. From my, what I understood at the time, that they were not to the final person at that time. They were under the condition that they had to be tied before they were finally sold. And because of that, they weren't to the final person, the final end user, and so they were not terminated under the development agreement. That's that that's the difference.
Okay. But didn't your client already own the lots?
No.
Are they known at that time?
No, they were in escrow.
Okay.
So and then but then you also have to consider that there's the planned development that sits on top of that that also has some restrictions. So yes, part of it is that it was still under the development agreement, but then it's also under the planned development. And without changing that, you can't change the sites without going through further. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, you know, you make statements that development agreement doesn't apply to the end user. I don't believe Jim's going to be the end user. He's not going to keep the 54 lots.
And we've corrected that record.
Yep.
Luke misspoke, that's my fault. And it his was not terminated because of a sale to the end user. His was terminated based on.
The 15 years.
15, yeah. Okay. So please, please stop, for the record, please stop repeating that. It's now been corrected for the record.
Okay. As a developer out there, I have made mistakes. One of the mistakes in Sienna Villas, if you go down, we have a beautiful row of 20 two-story houses, except there's one two-story, one single-story house in the middle. I've regretted that decision. They were the third client in there. We just wanted to sale, and it was a mistake. You have the opportunity to save this land for a beautiful hotel. You're not going to have another chance, once you put houses there, to put a hotel on the site at the end of the island that could be a destination resort. So it's not just about land. There's plenty of land around the city. There's plenty of places you can build more houses. There's only be one place on the end of the island to build a hotel, a beautiful resort hotel. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Charlie Harmon. I'm a homeowner at 612 Grand Island Drive in Sienna Villas, also own another lot at 643, and I'm building a home in Monticello, so I have a vested interest in what's going on here today. I feel like this is a real easy decision for you guys. Absolutely, positively, no way are you going to approve this today. The two reasons, you just don't know. We don't know because the traffic studies are 25 years old. You really don't know what you're up against and what the problems are. You really don't know what you're up against and what the problems are. And until you get new studies all the way through, you can't make an informed decision. It's impossible. The staff recommending this property to you guys with 25-year-old studies that are in, against the 10-year rule from the state for updating is egregious. And the fact that you would, would put any credence to it at all, I think should be admonished. The second part of that is there's no planned development. There's no planned development. You're, you're signing a blank check. They can do whatever they want and they will. They'll change it to whatever it is. These 40 homes could be 150 when they get done. You don't know, you won't, you're putting the cat out of the bag, you can't put it back in. Why is there no planned development? This, we've been to three of these now. The first one, they had no plan. The second one, they had a semi-plan, but then when we asked details, everything changed. And this is Jim Roll's words at that time. Well, if we can't sell and do what we're proposing, we'll just change it and make it apartments. Those are his words. I question what they're going to do today. We've got 94 units going in, somehow they've made it 54 when it's really 94. Nice sleight of hand, they should go to Bullhead and serve, do cards. But there's no planned development. It's could change to anything. So if you don't have a planned development, you really don't know what you're signing off for, using 25-year-old studies, you've got to say absolutely no. Come back to me with proper studies, come back to me with a planned development that these guys, all we've asked for is a planned development so we could be part of the pro, part of the solution. We could suggest a few things, we could get into agreement and go forward. Jim Roll has, has approved, has refused to do that, although we've asked him. I don't even think he has plans to build anything. My guess is there's already a contract to sell this property the second that you approve it at a higher price because it's now got a new zoning. They'll sell it, the new developer will come in and they'll want to build a thousand square foot hotel, who knows? That's the problem. We don't know. We're just asking to be part of the, of the solution of getting something that's right for the community. We've been shut out at every single turn. That's just not right, guys. And in fairness, and to the city, that's just not right. Don't be a party to the developer because they're not going to, they're not going to do what they're telling they're going to do. They've changed the story too many times. This is just a continuing saga. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wish to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name is Wayland Gates. I live on the island. I've owned property out there for over eight years. I want to come to you guys and just kind of touch on all the points that have been made today. I'm just going to start at the beginning and go down. Mr. Hayes came forward to discuss the concern about access on the island, fire access and all of that. He lives out there and he's not concerned now. He wasn't concerned when he bought. Neither was anybody else that lives out here. The density is clearly already approved for a higher use. This is a very logical answer to all of the concerns that I've heard addressed today. We reduce density, we have less traffic on the bridge by doing that, and we end up with a solution that does address all of these concerns. I think that this actually does address them. I think what we're hearing here today is, we just don't want to see anything built out there, which is unfortunate, it's already approved for that. So even if that was the case, it doesn't matter because it's already approved. I want to touch on, I'm talking about a planned development. This is a planned development. The reason why they're asking for a planned development is because they're asking for exceptions to the zoning options that are available to them. That's it. A planned development doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to show you exactly where everything and all of that is. Sometimes that's necessary, but in this particular instance, what they're asking for is some very small exceptions. I think we could rephrase the entire thing in layman terms, if you will, that they're asking for R1 zoning where you can build a taller structure. Or in other words, RE zoning that has smaller setbacks, which is actually what they're asking for. The multifamily takes the current density that's there and reduces it. It actually accomplishes the goal that everybody here seems to want. I think that Debbie spoke about this isn't in line with the original vision. I actually agree with her. This isn't in line with the original vision. What's there currently isn't in line with the original vision. Because I don't think the original vision was nothing. Obviously, that's shown to not be economically viable, and what's approved there could be built out, and everybody wants this beautiful resort and all of that. But I'm going to say something that may not be popular. A lot of people, the applicant can't say this because they're being paid by the people, but I'm going to say it. The Island Inn Hotel is owned by the Patel's. That is a great example of what it looks like to have a hotel that's on the island that's a beautiful resort. If anybody's seen that recently, if anybody's seen that recently, they can recognize that it is not beautiful. It is not what we want on the island, and that it's in need of many repairs, and most people would not recommend people go stay there, that I know that live on the island. So if the Patel's, under their current approved use of the property, were to build another hotel, I think it could likely be exactly the same as the Island Inn, which I'm certain the people here do not want. So I think that we need to consider that what they're asking for today moves this in the right direction. While it may not be exactly what we all want, this moves it away from what we for sure don't want and closer to what we do want. One of the things that I think is a common term here is that, and in the letters have been sent in, is we just don't want any development out there. Well, the cat's out of the bag for that. We recognize that that can be changed. I want to talk about the development agreement. Greg Clark brought this up. We've recognized now multiple ways, the development agreement does not exist for these properties anymore. If there's an issue with that, that should be litigated somewhere, I suppose, and they could argue that as another developer, but I don't think that today's the venue for that. Furthermore, let's just say the development agreement was in place. How does that affect the construction that's being proposed here today? I think that we're taking multiple issues that are not connected and saying, oh, the development agreement. But the development agreement actually would allow more density and more use. It wouldn't affect any of this, the concerns about fire, traffic, utilities, or any of that. And in closing, I'll say that if we go back and talk about what they're asking for, they're asking for a zoning with limited exceptions, which will in fact limit the amount of homes that they're able to build and limit the amount of units that they're able to put on the multifamily property. I appreciate you guys' time and I appreciate what you do. I hope that you take all those into consideration today.
Any questions of the speaker? Thank you, Mr. Gates. Anybody else that has anything to, to add? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Christine Apples. I'm on the island and I am, it's our second home, so I don't know what interest that makes me land in. Some of the questions that I have is, as a person that has a house out there, and we've been out there for 11 years, when we came out, we knew that there was a hotel slated for there, and now they want to build something else. I think what some of the objection, and I'm going to speak for myself, but maybe for some of the people in here, is we don't know, we have not been given any information on what is planned. You say 15 multifamily, what does that mean? Are those condos, apartments? What does that mean for us? 54 houses, I, I understand that because we built our house out there. And you can say that, yeah, we have ours and we don't want anybody else to have theirs. That's not the case. I think the case is that there's just not enough information. And if you guys don't have a solid plan in front of you to know what they're planning on building, we certainly don't, because you guys are our first line of defense out on the island to help us be responsible in all of the, we're the caregivers out there for the island. We take care of the island. The city takes care of the island. And I think everybody in this room is just looking out for the best interest of the island, not their own best interest. And so we just want to make sure that everything that is built out there is in the best interest of the island. And we don't have the information, so how can we know what the best interest is? And how can you know what the best interest is if you don't have the information in front of you to look at it and say, like the gentleman said, where the trash cans are going to go? How many cars are going to be in the driveway? How many, what is it, condos, apartments, casitas, duplexes? We don't know what's consistent with the island. And I think that that should be something that you guys should think about and look at before you let anything go through. Because we're not, I don't think anybody on the island is really against building anything else. They just don't know what's being built out there and we would, we'd like to know before and have some input on what's best for the island. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add? Please state your name for the record.
Good morning, my name is Ben Nunley. I've been on the island since 92. I guess one question to the board. Was the hotel development, did it have a detailed plan before you approved it? So we spoke about it today. Was there a detailed plan before it was approved?
Thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Rob Robertson. I'm a resident on the island, a recent resident, purchased a property less than a year ago. When I purchased this property, I very much enjoy the, the resort style of living in paradise. I came from California, from groves and groves of seas of residential properties. Not my ideal situation. In having this new resident on the island, you know, we have come to the realization that the, the resources on the island, as far as resort style amenities are few and far between. The original master plan of having a resort style hotel, restaurants, other amenities, was a very attractive thing to me when I spent considerable amount of money to, you know, relocate, you know, to the island. And that, that to me is, the jewel of the island is, is that style of living, not in a sea of residential construction. So that's me.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, Mr. Nelson's been here before. Come forward, please.
Well, all I can say is I'm glad I'm not a planning commissioner. I've heard a couple of things today, and one was from my friend Wayland. He goes, what is it that we don't want? I haven't really heard that explicitly. I haven't heard what we actually want. I'm also really confused on the environment, I mean, on the expired development agreement. If something's expired, do these guys still have 400 lots? Or, I mean, I've been like chasing this rabbit down a hole ever since I started listening today. I don't know if everyone, does everyone out here understand what this expired thing means? And so, I mean, it's like, if, if these lots are expired in 15 years and they're gone, what does that mean?
I don't know. Do you want me to take a second to explain a little bit at least?
Please.
Okay. So, so we have the development agreement, and that outlines things like the studies. It outlines some of the responsibilities and rights of the parties, but it doesn't contain the zoning. So the planned development that sits over the development, that's what contains all the details related to the lots, the sites, the planning, all of the rights that, that map that you see up there, that's all under the planned development. So the development agreement just gets together some of those other responsibilities that are respective to the developer and the city.
Are you trying to confuse me?
No, no. I'm not. It's just, it, it, there's just, it's a multifaceted, it's complex. It's complex.
Let's hold that argument for another day.
Okay.
Now.
But I can just tell you, the development agreement has nothing to do with the number of sites, or what the site looks like, or what's been approved related to the zoning regulations.
Unrelated to this, I have a lot that backs up in Monticello. I'm probably the, I mean, my back, my fence will join this project. Now, one other thing, I also don't like a 15-foot back, 15-foot backyard backset or whatever you want to call it.
It's a building setback.
Setback. Now, why do I have a 25-foot setback and everyone else has a 15? Unrelated to this project, I have another project over by Home Depot, which is a boat storage project being built. Several months ago, the developer, my neighbor, wanted to change from commercial to residential. I actually came to the meeting and I'm thinking to myself, why do I want to sit here and dog his project? He owns it just like I own the project next to him, so I didn't say anything. And as soon as the commission approved his zone change, he completely changed his design, put his project on for sale, and now it's up for, it's a completely new project from what he has actually pushed to the planning commission when he approached you folks. And like the other people in this building, I'm very concerned that, and I've known Jim for many years, that as soon as he, like one lady said also, is as soon as Jim gets this approved, boom, it's on the market for someone else to come in there and develop condos into it. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name's Monique Hayes. I also live on the island. And I just have a few comments, and I am in agreement with most people here with the exception of the guy in the purple shirt. But, you know, when this Grand Island Estates planned development began, sorry, I'm trying to catch where, there was a vision. And I think at that time, they looked at it as a resort community. Now, I'm not saying I want a hotel there necessarily either. However, looking at the vision at that time, and people that bought their homes based on that plan, people, some expect to retire there. This is going to be a resort living community. And so they purchased homes with that knowledge, knowing that they were going to have a, a nice resort. Now, could it end up being an island hotel? Well, hopefully during that process, these people again will come together and make sure that that doesn't happen and try to be part of that development. I just, the future development is what we expected that's been already approved. So I find that it's, would be very unjust for you guys to approve this application, especially not knowing what that five acres is going to be, and then the 18 acres is lacking any kind of details. So to approve something that we still don't really know, and I'll just reiterate, there's been no studies done. I mean, granted, in 98 or 94, whenever that was, those studies were done for water, sewer, all these, they didn't have, they didn't have those homes developed at the time. Now we've got homes developed. What is the water pressure? What about the fire hydrants that would have to be installed every 500, 300 feet? What, if there's a fire, do we have enough water pressure? Should something really go up in flames? I just feel like the studies need to be done until a decision can be made. It just, it just doesn't make any sense. I don't know, you know, they can base it, when they did those studies back then, they based it on the potential, but now we're reality. Let's factually see where we're at. So that's, you know, I know other people have spoken to that, but just lastly, what I want to say is, I just feel that your responsibility is to ensure the infrastructure integrity and the safety of the people here in Lake Havasu City. And to actually adhere to this approved planned development that has already gone before the commission and, and previously, and been approved. So you've, you've approved. So, you've, you've set precedent to, to bind current and previous constructions to that same planned development. So, why can that, why does that change now? And I just feel like, should you approve this application, we just won't have any confidence in your ability in the future to adhere to any previous planned developments you may have approved. I just feel like we just wouldn't be able to trust. So, that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Mr. Nelson, you know the rules.
I'm just here to clarify something that was said earlier. Jim, Luke, and Kelly had a, and Mr. Clark had a conversation about a lot tie on the island. All those details are in the packet that I gave you. The application for the lot tie disclosed that the lot tie was for a sale. And the, the tying of the lots together were, were, it was contingent upon closing escrow that that was completed. It was said earlier that that never happened, that lot tie actually was approved by the city and completed. And we did close escrow. And that was intended for an end user who was going to be building a home, one home. And a month later, the city revoked that approval. And so, I just want to clarify that that's what really happened, is there was an end user in mind. It was disclosed in the application, and it was revoked. And the reason for the revocation was in, in the denial because of the supplemental development agreement. So, I do want to clarify that that is what really happened.
Thank you. All right, see, okay.
I'm sorry. I forgot to clarify one thing.
And your name again for the record.
Tom Stapen. Is, I've been here for 14 years. And I was, to be honest with you, that was part of a selling point for me buying on the island when I first came to Havasu and loved the island atmosphere. I love the nautical and, and all the vibration that Havasu has to offer. And I know this was probably a joke, but they were telling me it was going to be a big Marriott hotel at some point when I first bought here. Now, that, that dream has probably gone away. But I think that anyone builds a new hotel here, it's not going to be Wayland's Orange Hotel that he's been talking about tonight, today. So, anyway, my personal feeling is, I'd like to see a hotel go in there. And I'm probably going to get stoned when I go out of the room today for saying that. But I like the idea of the commercial, more restaurants, not going off the island, being able to walk to get something to eat, all that kind of stuff is what I came to Havasu for.
I'm sure they'd entertain a sale for you.
Entertain a what?
I'm sure they'd entertain a sale for, for you buying it. I'm sorry.
I'll be, I'll be honest with you. I was actually, when that came up for sale for the, with the state, I was actually bidding on it. But anyway, that's a long time ago. But sincerely, all of us walked to the island, all of us don't want to leave the island. I mean, that's why, you know, people ask me, why don't you go up to the Highlands up there? I mean, I wouldn't live in the Highlands for anything. That's like driving to a new city. I mean, the island is where it's at.
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Here, I'll take one more.
Hi, Donna Robertson. I live on the island. I too, like other people who've spoken already, when we purchased our home there, we bought with the assumption and knowing that there was going to be a resort property there. And we were okay with that. I mean, again, some people might not be, but it was going to have restaurants and commercial use and place for people on the island of people that are existing homeowners to gather, to socialize. When you put 54 more homes plus another 40 condos or apartments, that's not going to give you the same feel. It's not going to give anybody an, an area to gather. So, I think it's, it's a disservice to the community, to the existing homeowners right now. And I think that the committee should not vote for this project to rezone, and we should stick with the same plan that's there. Go forward, find a reputable hotel to go in there and to build that. And it would be doing a great service to the existing homeowners that are there on the island, rather than changing completely everything. Also, you talk about the general plan is not, is void now. But that doesn't mean that the traffic studies should be already done, or the water, or the sewer. I don't want my water pressure lowered because now I've got another 90 homes or whatever, you know, whatever it is. I think it's irresponsible of you people as elected officials or appointed to make this decision without all of these studies already in place. And you talk about a second bridge going in, from what my understanding was, is the bridge was supposed to go in before any of this was developed. And I don't know that 100% to be true, but I'm thinking that that's the case. So, I, I will dig into that to get clarification on that further. But I, I don't see how anything can go forward in being built, whether it's the resort or more houses without all the traffic reports completely done and in, the bridge study to be done and in, all the water sewer, all the infrastructure to be completely finished, and reports in on current studies, not 1997. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion of the meeting. I'm going to bring it back to the table. I'm going to invite the applicant back up to rebut some of the comments made here. Mr. Gordon?
Thank you. I think we all know what the underlying concerns are. And I guess I just want to start with saying that, you know, the island is a really unique piece of property in Havasu. It's a special place that's got its own set of challenges. And as Havasu's evolved, the island's not unlike any other developments, any other portions of Havasu that ebb and flow as time goes on. Economies change, market conditions change, the demand of the public, the demand of what people want changes. This master plan is old. It's not unlike a lot of other planned developments that we've talked about for years and years and years in this city that get adopted and ultimately aren't feasible and don't come to fruition. At the end of the day, you know, for however many years this has been in place, a, a resort, a hotel, and large commercial like that on the island has proven not to be feasible, or would be there by now. It tried to get there and it never got there. It started and then it didn't finish. So, at the end of the day, what is before you today is a request to take this last parcel of the master plan within the island and bring it into conformance with the rest of what's on the island. Some single-family use, just like every one of these neighborhoods that are on the island, a small pocket of multifamily use, just like all of the other condos and other uses that exist on the island that have been there for years. So, everything that's being proposed is consistent with not only what's been built in this development, but also what's been built on the island and what the public has asked for on the island. With that, I did want to address the whole planned development comment. Mr. Gates did address this a little bit, and he's correct. A planned development can take, and, and staff council can attest to this, planned development can take any shape it wants to. It can simply be a, a text amendment that asks for a variance, or a reduction, or a restriction, or something outside of the bounds of the zoning code. Or, it can be a very detailed plan with renderings and maps and every little explicit detail called out. And every planned development that's come before this city in the past varies from one tiny little text amendment to a 50-page document that illustrates every single little aspect of it. In the next, I'm going to go back to my slides if I could, and we'll talk about what is being proposed. In the public meeting that we had with these folks, the 18 acres, the larger parcel did show a plan. It showed a plan of single-family lots that was consistent with what is being requested, a loop of streets, lots that are 10,000 square feet or larger, that is consistent with the R E P D request, that is consistent with the other developments that already exist on the island. So, they've seen this plan. In fact, I don't want to speak for them, but they were, they were happy with this use, is our understanding. We talked a lot about the five acres and the potential of the multifamily. We heard their concerns. We talked about it. There wasn't a second follow-up public meeting. Maybe there could have been, maybe there should have been. But we were prepared today to talk about that in more detail. It wasn't the action of this particular action. We're talking about the general plan amendment. The zoning is where we were going to get into this in more detail. But there is a plan on the screen, and we were prepared to come here and answer some of the concerns that the public had about what could, could, or should, or would be built on that five acres. The restrictions that we're asking for, the eight units per acre right there off the bat, really limits what can be built from a multifamily standpoint. Further in the public meeting, the biggest concern we heard was over the density and over the heights. The heights being a little ironic, considering there was a 70-foot hotel proposed behind them. But we were prepared today to take that eastern row of lots, first of all, to adopt this plan showing 15 lots that varied from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet as part of one of the conditions for this five-acre multifamily piece. Well, if you do the math on 10,000 to 15,000 square foot parcels at eight units per acre maximum density, you're only going to get about two units per parcel. So, the restrictions that are being put on, even though there's not, or hasn't been, a pretty picture, renderings, colored maps, trees, the simple math and the simple logistics of the zoning code with the restrictions that are being put on it, again, first of all, five acres at eight units per acre, the most that could ever be developed is 40 units. Okay? We're willing to adopt this plan, simple little loop street with 10,000 to 15,000 square foot lots on the perimeter, again, with the restrictions that this PD will have, would limit each of those parcels that you see on this map to be about two units at the most. So, you're talking about a, I mean, no, we don't have renderings of townhomes or condos or what they're going to be. Okay? Because the developer didn't want to invest that far into it until we knew if we could even move forward with this, right? But if you apply the restrictions that this PD will put over that five-acre parcel, you're talking about a duplex-type unit that could fit on each of those parcels. In reality, it's probably going to be 30 units, not 40 units. But again, until the full engineering's done and the designs are done, you know, this is the plan that's before you today, that we're willing to put before you today as one of the conditions. Along with the restriction, that those five lots on the east edge of this property that abut the existing neighborhood have a restriction of single-family maximum height of 18 feet. From what we heard, that limits some of the concerns of those single-family parcels that are there, of having a multifamily unit towering right in their backyard. So, we're willing to restrict those parcels, adopt this plan, and that gives you pretty good certainty as to what's going to happen. Exactly what they're going to look like, exactly how many square feet they are, if some of them are two-story, some of them are single-story outside of that row. No, those decisions haven't been made yet. But if this is adopted today, and if the commission adds those conditions to their motion, then that plan right there could not change, and those restrictions could not change unless it came back before the public and before this board and before council. So, again, we were going to get into all this in the next couple of hearings, but we might as well talk through it now, and hopefully, we can move through everything else a little more smoothly. But this is the plan that's before you today. The subdivision map, or the development plan map for the 18 acres was part of the public hearing, was part of what was presented to staff. That's been out there for a long time. The five acres did not have a plan for it, other than the restrictions that we were trying to put on it, to keep it a simple, low-impact development that was consistent with other stuff that has been happening on the island. We're willing to add a couple of details to that and restrict that a little bit to try and address some of the concerns that are out there today. So, with that, I'll answer any questions related to that and open it up for any other discussion on that.
Questions of the applicant. Ms. Zero.
Just when, when you were talking, my understanding is you're talking condos for multifamily. How many units would be together?
Well, the simple, what I was trying to explain, and whether they're a townhome or a condo unit, or exactly what they are under multifamily, the, the owner doesn't know yet. Okay? But these parcels as presented that are on this map, if you apply the restriction of eight units per acre to a 10,000 or 15,000 square foot parcel, you're talking probably two units per parcel.
Okay.
So, that's going to result in a duplex-type configuration.
Any, any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
Okay. We are now at the table for staff's recommendations.
All right. Chairman Commissioners, thank you very much. Before we go down to the staff's recommendation, I just want to make sure we're all clear on what we're discussing, what this item is right now, this current item.
Good idea.
Before, before the commission. This item is for a minor general plan amendment. All the other details about exactly how many lots, exactly what sort of development.
Zoning, etc.
Below that, the zoning is not really what you're considering right now. Obviously, it's, it impacts part of what your decision is, but you're not considering the end use, the end zoning. What you're doing here is you're trying to make a determination whether the existing general plan designation, which allows that mixed-use development that was previously approved, whether that general plan designation can be substituted, can be replaced with this residential general plan type designation to allow what they want to do in the end. So, what we're acting, what you're, that this motion is now, is for the general plan portion of this, of the, of the project. And then, the next two items that you'll hear will be for the zoning, which get more detail about specifically what exceptions they're asking for and that sort of thing for the zoning, which actually gives them the entitlements for the use of the property. So, hopefully, if I explained that right. So, with that in mind, based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for Land Use Action 22-3552, a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for, for 340, 350, 380, and 390 Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, Parcels A, B, C1, and C2, to change the future land use designation from resort-related to resort-residential. And just as a reminder, this item will go to the city council's January 10th meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay. Questions of staff by commission? Anybody? Seeing none? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. And I'm going to start a little bit of the discussion by stating, I have never been a fan of single-family residential on the island. It doesn't sit well with a lot of people, but having moved here in 1974 and seeing the city develop, I don't think it was a place for a single-family residential. However, it's there, and it is a fact these days. We're not here today to revoke the current plan, or current planned development. And I don't think we're here today to condemn the property, to lie fallow due to no commercial viability, if you will. I see this, the result of these three hearings as a reduction in density and a benefit to the community. So, I, I, I think it's a no-brainer. I don't see a problem with this. Commissioners?
Ms. Zero?
Yes. I've been sitting here today, listening, trying to absorb as much of this information as I can, and hearing, to me, it was a little contradictory because I heard some people saying they want the resort with the 250 rooms, which could be on a, when, especially when we have events, another 200 cars minimum there all the time, living on the island with you, with the hotel, when the concern was about the safety, that traffic going back and forth. Then I heard others saying, no, that they just didn't want the development because they are currently concerned about the traffic. So, I'm trying to weigh the back and forth that I'm hearing from that. I do take that our fire chief and our police chief have the best concerns of their citizens at heart, and currently saying that they are 3% of the calls is what they're getting on the island with a four- to five-minute response time, and the safety down the middle of the bridge tells me that they're trying to make sure that there's access for all of you, should there be an emergency, even if you're not at the events that are there, that anytime you're at your home, there's ways to get you off and get you the medical help that you need. The other thing is that this property has been approved, and my understanding is... The other thing is that this property has been approved, and my understanding is that even if we don't approve the homes, they could do a hotel if they decided it was feasible, although what we're hearing is this was approved, I think, over 10 years ago, if they, anybody wants to make money, will develop something. And the fact that a hotel hasn't been made out there and from the comments that I'm hearing about the hotel you have there, doesn't seem that it's getting a lot of attention either. So a little bit of concern with that as well. So I like the fact that this proposal tends to bring the density down, which is the concern I was hearing about traffic about coming up, that this is, and the fact that we know it's going to be condos or townhomes, but they're taking into account the vision from the people behind the property, looking out where before you'd be looking at a wall, in some cases of a hotel. This was going to be a little more developed. I think it'll look prettier than the hotel. I do understand you want other restaurants and other opportunities out there so you don't have to always come off the island if you want to enjoy a dinner. But I do think that, I agree with the chair, that I think this is going to cause less of a density issue that you had concerns about, a less traffic issue that you have concerns about, and it will make the area look nice with the landscaping, the design we have them putting in with the homes and the building that's there. So I have listened, I'm trying to take the, you know, there's different opinions here on what people wanted and trying to weigh all of that. And as somebody says, it's tough when you have to look at these conditions because someone's not going to be happy with whatever we come up with, and I do apologize for that. We're trying to weigh, and I did listen carefully, I read everything that was sent to me. I am trying to weigh this as carefully as I can for the betterment of the entire city, but most specifically for those of you that live on the island.
Any other comments? Mr. Diaz.
So I look at this a little bit differently. You know, we had a big parcel land out by the mall that company wanted to come in and put in a bunch of storage units. They wanted to take it from a, I think it was 25 feet to a 40-foot height, and we ended up not approving that. Originally, the city staff wanted to approve that, and then they changed their mind based on some other input we received from us and then the vote and then the city council. And this is a key, to me, this is like a key piece of land, 18 acres plus the five, so 23 acres, that if we do put residential homes on that, one day, I'm just thinking, thinking forward, one day we're going to say, God, that's like the pristine piece of property, we could have put something else on there. And I'm looking.
Please.
And I'm looking at the general plan, and I know we keep on saying this is minor, this is minor, but I'm looking at a, the general plan, which I'm looking at this whole meeting, this is the general plan, in 2016 it was redone, but it's supposed to have, it's supposed to be part of that factors in the general plan redoing it is input from the citizens of the city. And I think even though we're saying it's minor, we do need to do this in the way that it's outlined in detail in this book, how to change it. And I think that, that's why I will be voting no on this issue. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Lear.
So, yeah, I have to say I'm in favor of the general plan amendment, just purely because it seems like there's such a consistent residential element in the core and keeping the core residential makes sense to me. And then future developments within the state land parcels or what other periphery parcels in the IB zone could certainly be the opportunity for resort and resort-related uses. So that's why I'd be in favor of this.
Anybody else? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion. Ms. Wilson.
I move to recommend that city, I'm sorry. I move to approve the request for a minor amendment to the future land use map of the city's general plan for 340, 350, 380, 390 Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, Parcel A, B, C1, and C2, to change the future land designation from resort-related to resort residential.
We have a motion by Ms. Wilson. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ms. Zero, and the motion is to approve item number 22-3552 as stated. Any further discussion on the motion?
Motion carries, five to two.
Okay, the next item on today's agenda is related. It is ID number 223554. This is a request for a planned development rezone for the same properties, 340, 380, and 3, excuse me, for properties 340, 380, and 390 Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, Parcel A, and portions of Parcels B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district and establishing a new residential estates planned development district, allowing the following exceptions: minimum lot area reduced from 15,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet, side setback reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet, and rear side yard setback, excuse me, rear yard setback reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet. Mr. Morris, your presentation.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. This is going to seem a lot familiar, the same properties or close to the same properties we were talking about earlier. The subject property consists of Parcel A and portions of B, C1, and C2, together measure approximately 18 acres and are vacant and undeveloped. They are located on the island at the northwest corner of Grand Island Estates, near the western end of Beach Comer Boulevard. The subject properties are currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood planned development. The properties to the north and west are vacant Arizona state land and are zoned island body beach. The property to the northeast is currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood planned development, but that owner has requested it be rezoned to mixed-use, excuse me, to RMPD. The properties to the east and south are zoned residential estates planned development and developed with single-family homes, some vacant lots, and Grand Island Park. The subject properties are part of the Grand Island Estates development, approved in 1994, which consists of five development, five developed single-family residential subdivisions, a park, and the subject properties outlined in red here. The currently approved development for the subject properties includes up to 70-foot tall hotel resort with approximately 225 rooms, 45 residential casita units, and approximately 50,000 square feet of commercial uses for Parcels A, B, and C. The applicant has also submitted a separate request for a general plan amendment for the property to allow the proposed residential zoning districts. The applicant asked to amend the city's general plan from resort-related to resort-related, to resort residential to facilitate development of this residential property. The planned development amendment is the second step in this process, excuse me, the planned development rezone amendment is the second step in this process. This request here outlined in green is for about 18 acres and includes approximately 54 detached single-family homes on individual lots. The area will be very similar to the existing residential areas of Grand Island Estates. There's a separate submittal for the five acres next to it for proposed for multiple family development. Both these areas are part of the existing planned development but are no longer included in the development agreement for Grand Island Estates. Here's a table with the proposed uses. The request will eliminate the currently approved commercial, resort casita, and resort hotel uses and replace them with about 54 single-family residential units. This will result in only residential units on the development, I mean, no commercial uses on the development, excuse me. The existing planned development approved for Grand Island Estates also includes these five residential subdivisions outlined in green, were approved for a maximum 402 lots. These five subdivisions are final plotted right now with only about 340 lots, which is about 60 fewer than what were originally approved for that development. The proposed development before us right now is for 54 residential lots, when added to the 342 existing lots equals 396 lots, which is still less than the 402 lots that were approved for the Grand Island Estates overall. The applicant is asking to rezone this to REPD, which is planned development, to allow exceptions to the RE residential zoning standards. The exceptions requested are the minimum lot area reduced from 15,000 square feet to 10,000, side yard setbacks reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet, and the rear yard setback reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet. The requests, exceptions are similar to what were granted to other single-family residential lots within the Grand Island Estates developments. Staff supports the proposed exceptions. As I mentioned before, Development Services, Public Works, Fire, and Police Management staff met and reviewed the proposed amendment, have no concerns about the development. It is determined that the project is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the existing access to the island or to police or fire response times. There is also adequate capacity for sewer and water service for the development. That concludes staff's presentation. Open for any questions. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Morris, in a nutshell, I'd like you to define what we are doing here compared to what we just did.
Thank you for the question. What you did before was you made a recommendation for a higher level, higher altitude, if you will, use of the property. You said, okay, you're okay with changing that use from a mixed-use, commercial residential type mixed use to a residential use. So that was a general plan designation. And so because you've approved that and you've recommended approval of that going on, so that sets the stage for this rezoning now, where they're actually changing the entitlements, the zoning on the ground allows them certain entitlements for that property, how to develop it. So that's what we're doing now. We're talking about the rezoning, the property, removing it from the previous planned development. That Grand Island Estates will no longer be part of that development. They're going to come in and they're going to remove themselves from the planned development. They're coming in asking for a new planned development, but just asking for some exceptions to the RE zoning standards. So the RE is residential estates, allows 30 feet in height. They're asking for some exceptions. Normally it's 15,000 square feet. They're asking for 10,000 and some exceptions for the setbacks. So what we're doing here, what you're doing now, is reviewing this and then making a recommendation to city council for the zoning for the property. So I hope that helps.
So in a nutshell, we already changed the planned development. Now we're considering whether or not the parcels warrant the zone change. They either merit it or they do not.
Make sure I understand your question, your comment there. You've changed, you've recommended approval of the general plan change.
Excuse me, I misspoke.
Okay, all right. And now we're changing, like you said, the planned development.
And I'm just clarifying this for the record and for the public.
Right, very good.
Okay. All right, any questions of staff by commissioners? Any whatsoever? Mr. Diaz.
Mr. Morris, so the reasoning for the setbacks going, I mean, the size of the lots and the setbacks being wanting to be changed, can you give me just the general reason why they're asking for that?
I don't think they provided, the applicant provided that specific information in the request. I'm sure they'll be happy to answer that question for you.
Okay, is the applicant present? Would you like to speak to the rezone?
Yes, please.
And for the record?
Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. Yeah, perfect. Go to the, keep going. One more, there you go. Yeah, first of all, Commissioners, Chairman, thank you again, Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. As was stated by Mr. Morris, the current zoning is mixed-use neighborhood PD. What is being proposed here today? And to answer Mr. Diaz's question, the request to go to REPD is really, two reasons. One, the other developments, the other single-family developments on the island have an REPD in place, so it's to be consistent with that. The other reason is the RE designation allows for 30 feet of height, so that allows for these to be two-story if they choose to be. And so we're asking for the same zoning that's consistent with the other developments there, allowing for the 30-foot of height, but restricting the setbacks in a few places. Again, and that's consistent with the other neighborhoods as well. At least one of those neighborhoods has three-foot setbacks existing today. So what's being asked here in this case, 18 acres, to go to an REPD with this site plan or development plan in place for the 54 single-family lots with those restrictions that Mr. Morris stated? With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions related to this plan. I think this one's pretty straightforward and clean, consistent, again, like I said, with what's out there today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that.
Any questions of the applicant?
I have a question.
Ms. Ballard.
On lots 25 and 26 at the end of the cul-de-sac, is the dotted line the property line?
No, that's an easement. There's some public utility easements that run along the perimeter there, that jog in there is part of a public utility, and I think an access easement, so.
So if you're asking to change the setbacks there from 20 feet to 15 feet, how does that impact that easement?
The easement rules.
Yes.
It can't change.
In the case where there's an easement and it, this, the easement, the more restrictive of the two would apply. So if this easement was more than 15 feet wide, they'd have to abide by the easement, the setback from.
They can't build into the easement.
Easement line, not from the property line. So.
Pardon me?
So if, again, if this was a rear setback of 15 feet, and let's say there was a 20-foot utility easement at the rear, then the 20-foot utility easement would rule.
And so you're impacting lot 26. If you reduced your setback in the rear, that person would be limited in what they could put in their rear yard.
To that, to that easement line. That is correct.
And the same for lot 25.
Correct. Those parcels are a little odd-shaped and a little larger, so, yeah, we're confident that that still provides enough building room for that single-family home.
And I believe lots 25 and 26 abut Monticello, is that correct?
That is correct, right there, yes.
Do you recall what the current setbacks are in Monticello for the rear yard?
I believe they're 20 or 25.
So if they're 25 feet and you're asking us to reduce the setbacks here from 20 feet to 15 feet, what's the reason? Is it density? Is it to get more lots on the?
It's to provide more flexibility, but to your point, those utility easements on the two lots that abut Monticello, I don't have the exact dimensions there, but in places, they're definitely at least 25 feet, if not wider, right there.
But those two lots would back to Monticello that have a 25-foot setback on their rear yard, and this would have a 10,000 square foot setback, I mean, a 15-foot setback?
15 or the size of that easement, whichever is greater.
They can't get any closer than the easement line.
Yeah. And that's larger than 15 feet through most of that easement, so.
But potentially those could be two-story units with a 15-foot setback?
Correct.
Thank you.
But a point of clarification.
With the exception of where that easement lies.
Yeah, they can't have a 15-foot setback that encroaches into that easement, so they're going to have to be outside of that easement.
Right. And I believe the homes in Monticello are two-story as well.
Other questions of the applicant? Anybody else? Anything else, Mr. Gordon?
If I misstated about, if they're not two-story, I apologize. They may be single-story. But regardless, they're being set back and that's what we're proposing here today. No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? We are now talking about the zoning only, whether or not the properties warrant the rezone.
Charlie Harmon, resident in the Villas, Siena Villas. Just a couple of things, just from a practical standpoint, the 18 acres and they're proposing 54 homes, when you divide that out, that's something over 17,000 square feet average lot, just the way it works out. But yet they're asking for 10,000.
Not taking into account the infrastructure and the rights of the way.
And the streets.
Yeah.
Streets.
Right. It's 17,000 for a lot, and they're asking for 10. So it seems like under the current, if they can get 54, why would they need any other change unless this plan is really never going to be adopted? And the 54 homes is going to be something significantly larger than that. And the setback, I think that one needs to be held, to be held in deference to the other community and the way they built their houses, things they did for their view, their quarter and so forth, to now come and encroach on their views and so forth because they wanted to have a little more property, I think is unreasonable. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, Greg Clark, Trinity Land Development again. Normally when a city plans, they lay it out where you have commercial and then you have a buffer. It's normally, you know, the multifamily before you get into residential. And their example of the five acres, they're going to do multifamily, and Mr. Staven is here. He actually owns the largest lot in Monticello. It's twenty-two thousand square feet. He's going to build probably about a fifteen thousand square foot house on that with multifamily right behind him. So I'm going to ask if you're going to approve this, if you could please move the five acres to center of the development to have a buffer from large single-family to regular single-family to multifamily. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Nelson. Oh, sorry. State your name for the record, please.
Chad Nelson, NELSO. So I started doing things on the island in two thousand nine. The first thing I did out there is I worked with the Eagle Scout to help them out with this Eagle Scout project, building the disc golf course in the Malibu Homeowners Association. We accomplished that through all volunteer work and and I do a lot of volunteer work, you know, around town and even today on the island. Last week, I was able to get the, get a concrete contractor to donate some large pads for future cabanas on the island walk path going around the island. That happened last week. And so, you know, I've had a lot of experience on the island since two thousand nine. I brought parcel F out of bankruptcy into building some arguably some of the best homes on the island to date. We just made a record sale in Monticello, right next to this five-acre parcel. And these these pieces on the island should not be, it should not be taken as lightly as is being taken in this meeting. It is an important component to the city. And I think that, like I said earlier, these these parcels are moving in the right direction, like we're getting there for sure. The applicant never reached out to me, even though I've sold properties in every single development, and I've built homes with five different builders in every single development. I will tell you that the Malibu's Property Owners Association, those lots are forty-five by eighty-five. And if you look at the Grand Island Estates villages and the very restrictive setbacks that we've had to deal with in that supplemental development agreement, the lots are forty-five feet by eighty-five feet deep, okay? And the setbacks are three feet on the sides, ten feet in the back. These are probably the, you know, and we built these in a down market. These were probably some of the more difficult sales I've ever had. When people walk into these houses and they go, ten-foot backyard, you know? I think it would be wise not to do the fifteen-foot setback, not only because, you know, they back to Monticello where the setbacks won't be equivalent, but also it's going to make, it's going to make it difficult for them to sell. I'm sure the reason why they want these setbacks is for deeper garages and for larger building envelopes. There's no issue with the five-foot setbacks on the side, but that fifteen foot in the back is going to make it difficult for them to sell, especially when, you know, the price point on the island is pretty high. So I would make a recommendation both to them and to you not to try to come up with something different, you know, maybe the maybe the garage could go into the setback a little bit, because that's really the component that is makes the sale, is the garage component, and being able to be a little deeper there, but maybe not the house being able to go fifteen feet back. But that's just a comment that I would make for everybody, including the applicant, that might be favorable to them as well. And then the last thing I want to point out, which I don't, I'm not going to reiterate this in the next one, but being a part of the island since since two thousand nine and all the things that I've been doing out there since, it's just really sad to me that there is no commercial component to this. There's no place for all the walkers, all the the families with strollers, all the bikers, you know? You can't stop and get a water or a Gatorade unless you go to the Chevron on the corner or if you go into some of the private areas that are not for public. They're, you know, they're meant for the people in the resorts. There is not a place to, there's no retail there now.
But those things are market-driven.
The current owner could easily build that and it would, it would succeed. They just don't want to. The best thing that could have happened in the last item is for the owner to just sell it to someone who's willing to build it. I have people in the room that are willing to build the resort, okay? It's just, it's not that the resort would never be built, it's that the owner doesn't doesn't want to build it, okay? It's, that perception is wrong, so. But we're past that item. This item, I just think it's, it's sad that that component is leaving these two parcels. And like I said, I've had experience, a lot of experience in these developments since two thousand nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Debbie Young. As you guys have stated in the last motion, you approved that because you said it was going to be less dense, so you thought that that was better for the island. If that's the case, then I would really ask that you not let them reduce the size of these lots that residential estates allows and not let them reduce their setbacks. If you guys truly wanted something less dense, then why are you going to let them build ten thousand square foot lots rather than fifteen thousand square foot lots? If you're looking for the betterment of the community, which I'm sorry to say, it seems like your last motion was not, then why are you going to allow one developer to max it out this much? We know that has already been done on the island. Is it right? No, absolutely not. But why are we going to continue that just for the betterment of one developer? I think that that's very irresponsible.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please state your name for the record.
Bob Strauss, Bob. Just a question maybe to clarify. If that amendment is approved, that's based on the layout here with fifty-four homes, if it was denied, how many homes would be in that eighteen-acre parcel? Question one. The second question is, do these setbacks apply to the five-acre partial as well? And last question is, can they be voted on separately? Thank you.
Mr. Morris? Well, thank you for the questions. The first question, well, can they be separate, voted on separately? Yes, they're two separate items. So this item before us right now is for the eighteen acres being rezoned to RE PD. What was the first question? I'm sorry. What was the?
The first first question was the variances is if approved is based on fifty-four homes. If it was denied, how many homes would remain with the larger setback?
If this request is denied, then it couldn't move forward. It would revert to the old zoning that they're already the mixed-use neighbor, mixed-use neighborhood. It would revert back to the mixed-use neighborhood PD zoning.
No, as I understand it, we're voting on the setbacks.
No, setbacks are part of their exception requests.
Okay, so if the exception is denied, how many homes would remain in that eighteen-acre parcel?
I, I don't quite understand the question.
Because the lots would be decreased.
Let me see if I can't clarify it.
Yes.
If the setback request is denied, it does not change the configuration of what they have presented here. You're still going to have the same amount of lots, it's just the setback, the building setback has increased a little bit, that's all.
Okay, so it won't change the number of homes in there?
No.
That was my question.
Ma'am, you're going to have to come to the podium if you have a comment.
Okay, well, that was the question in my mind is, does the number of lots change if they request for a smaller lot size?
It's not a smaller lot size, it's a building setback. It just changes the buildable area of each individual lot. It's not changing the quantity of lots. Ma'am?
Okay.
So, so they are asking for the RE, they're asking for, from the RE zoning standards, they're asking for three exceptions. One of them is the lot area to be reduced to a minimum ten thousand from fifteen thousand. The other being the side setbacks reduced from ten feet to five feet. And then the rear setback reduced from twenty feet to fifteen feet. So they're asking for those exceptions. So any one of those could affect how how the lots are, or how the homes are laid out, and they may affect how the lots are laid out. If they're not approved, let's say this item for the ten thousand square foot exception is recommended to not be approved, and then they have to go fifteen thousand square feet, that may change the layout of the of the property, certainly. But that's not the request, the request is for the exceptions. So if you're asking me how many lots they can go on there if they're fifteen thousand square feet, that's not, I can't calculate that. They, it's something the developer would have to do, make a presentation on how many lots they would fit in there at fifteen thousand square feet.
And I was addressing your setback question only.
Okay. And and that leads to the question of, biggest concern on the prior agenda was the density. So I would like to know, maybe the developer knows if he went back to the seventeen thousand square foot lots, if it would reduce the number of lots in that development?
Chances are it would.
Yes. Okay, thank you. If, maybe he has an answer for that, if it would go from fifty-four to fifty or forty-eight, it would be nice to know that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Morning, my name is Dane Hatch. I want to ask a question all the commissioners here. Why do you live here? Why do you continue to live in Lake Havasu? And for me, and I think for a lot of people in this room, is it's a beautiful town. We like to live here because it's not a gigantic city. We love our views, we love our sunsets, we love the lake. If we continue on with where we are going, I've lived here for thirty years, I've seen a ton of development, I've seen a ton of changes, some of which have not been the best, some of which are not the prettiest. We drive through town every day and we look at a lot of things in town and we go, man, that new hotel that just went up on Park is blocking a lot of views. That's not the prettiest looking hotel, you know? There's, you know, another hotel right next to the London Bridge, you know, that blocks views from the highway, that's not the prettiest, most aesthetically pleasing hotel that is in that area. I think that land could have been used for a higher and better use. This is some of the last land on the island that can be developed. Is this some of the highest and best use for this land? As Chad Nelson stated earlier, there is not much commercial on the island. Is there a developer out there that could do it and make it viable? Absolutely. Is, right now in this time, economic market going on? That's here and there. What could happen down the road, though, is something beautiful. What we are looking at right now, as we drive around the island and this gets developed, are we going to go, yeah, that's, that's beautiful, that's Havasu, that's part of something that is special, the island we all know and agree is special. We've got that beautiful walk path there, we've got some great restaurants, some great eateries out there, some great views. If we go forward with this, is this going to continue on with that stigma of why we like the island, of why we love to live in Havasu? If we continue on with, you know, changing this to the RE, we're going to remove that commercial aspect from it. We're going to, you know, allow a ton of more homes to come in there, which is not a bad thing. I love progress. Is this the best, highest use for that parcel? I don't think it is. I think in time, there's going to be something that could be spectacular there, that could open up for some beautiful restaurants, that could open up for some great shopping centers, that could be a phenomenal point for the island there. It's close to, you know, the public launch ramp. It is at the end of the island, which has some phenomenal views on all sides there. I, I think there is a better use for this property. There is limited amounts of property left in Lake Havasu that have this stigma of a fantastic property that could be developed into something phenomenal. This is one of those properties, and developing it into these homes is not going to be something that is going to be spectacular or beautiful in the eyes of Lake Havasu. You know, put aside the high density and, you know, all the traffic on the island, that is something that can be addressed later on down the road. If this is approved, we will be looking at homes. You're going to drive around and go, okay, that's just, you know, more homes. That's, that's not pretty, that's not Havasu. We are continuing to erode and take away from the beauty of Lake Havasu, and we have been doing that for many years, and it's, it's a shame. So I hope all of you take a look of what could be and what is presented to be. And down the future, down the road, there is a better chance of something better going in there, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hi, Darryl Coletto. I am a resident on the island. One question I had is for staff, you were mentioning three hundred and forty-some houses or currently or lots on the, is that built already? Is that including the ones that are, a lot that hasn't had a house on it yet?
That includes all the lots with or without houses. It's all the, all the lots that are final-platted out there, right?
Okay, so there's some lots that aren't built yet, those aren't included in that number.
Those lots that aren't built yet are included.
They are, I'm sorry. Okay, great. And then all I wanted to say on this topic as far as the the rezoning is, you've all said this is a special place, the island and what you've built out there so far. I would strongly encourage you to stick with that and not do setbacks. If you're going to build those kinds of houses, make them special, make the yards nice, make the setbacks, you know, reasonable for everybody. I just think you're building something special out there. Don't, don't skimp now. It's, it's the last piece we have out there that really could be something special. So if you're going to go forward, please consider the setbacks as a big, a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else who wish to speak about the zoning? Anybody else? Hearing, come forward, state your name for the record.
Same name as before, Tom Staven. I want to add something. I think the boat already left the dock on this one, but I really agreed with Mr. Diaz and the last gentleman that spoke, is that this is not, this is like the last property in our near future to be available for a hotel or commercial zone. And I'm speaking from a very selfish and greedy position here because I have a big Burmese mountain dog, and every morning and every night, even in the dark, about ten o'clock at night, my wife and I walk around the island with our dog. And it would be really nice, you know, luckily we have the Segrews and everything at the other end of the island, but it's at the other end of the island. Right across the street, we have the Boathouse Grill now, and I would love to have something closer, as well as I think a lot of the people here would love to eat and dine and enjoy their life, shop even, on the island. Okay, get away from that, left the dock. Right now we have fifty-four lots up here. Is any of this going to change to fifty-four to fifty-eight to sixty, sixty-two, or is this fifty-four locked in?
Mr. Morris? At this point, we're asking, they're asking for exceptions, so they don't have, they haven't presented a, a plan to go along with that. This is, I think, representative of what they want to do, but the, it could, if they're willing, maybe they have a plan they would want to submit as a development plan that roughly shows how, the layout and the lots. And that could be something that, if they want to add that, it could be a condition that the lot layouts would substantially match whatever's been submitted, and that could be something that the Planning Commission could add to the conditions of approval for the PD rezone.
Well, I think the people here are thinking, wow, we don't want fifty-four lots, but at the same time, they're thinking fifty-four lots. I hate to be here another meeting late, later down the road and have a bait and switch and all of a sudden we got sixty-five lots. On a second idea to the Mrs. Ballard.
Right.
I walk that path almost every day with my dog between Monticello and the RMPD. And I don't know if it's a utility easement or a park easement that runs across the back. There's, there's a paved trail that walks across the back of that. And I guess what I don't really want to see is, if that easement is part of the setback for that house, all of a sudden our easement has. for that house, all of a sudden, our easement has a two-story house right on the easement of that walkway.
I think you're talking about two different easements.
Well, I mean, I don't know, actually, I haven't seen the survey on it, I'm just looking at the map there, and it may be a sewer easement, it may be something else, but I know there is a walkway there, that's gotta be, you know, fifteen, twenty feet wide already. And so I'd hate to have somebody use that easement as a setback line for that house and be putting that house right on the bike, or right on the path there. And when I first got up here earlier this, this morning, I talked about the minimum setbacks, and I agree with everybody else, that let's stick with the twenty-five foot setbacks that we have all over the island. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? With regards to the zoning.
I was gonna wait till the very end, but everybody's leaving now, so comment and question. So apparently, the first motion, you did not consider, the majority of the commission did not consider the will of the people, and overruled the desires of people in the room here, so. So my question is, are you gonna provide clear and accurate information about the appeals process and give us documentation about how we can appeal this decision? It's my understanding, under the Lake Havasu Planning and Zoning Administrative Code fourteen, that is required that you give us information about the appeal process and provide us documentation so we can file an appeal.
Ms. Gary?
Yes, sir. At this point in time, they're just making a recommendation to the city council, and so, once they're done here today, their recommendations go to the city council, that'll be held at the next city council meeting in, I believe, January. And so at that point in time, that's when the final decision will be made, and then that's when, whatever course you want to take of action, the appeals may happen, and we can provide you what section of the code you need to look at for that. But this, this is just a recommendation.
Okay, just, just for clarification, because the way I read it, and educate me on this, it, it, it appeared to me that I thought the appeal occurred to this, this board and governing bodies here, but before I went to city council, is that not correct?
That's not correct, not for the recommendation. There are certain items in which the planning commission makes a final determination, and then an appeals process would be followed in that case. But because all today, all they're doing is making a recommendation to the city council, there are no final decisions being made, they'll go to the city council for final determinations.
Who do I talk to at the city to get this information and the documents, because I'm probably gonna need them?
We, I mean, we have the information.
You can feel free to reach out to me, I'm Luke Morris Development, I mean.
Okay, you have the documents and, and information.
I can help you with that, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Hello, I'm Wayland Gates. Kind of the same as last time, I just want to go over a few of the points and highlight the stuff that I felt was brought up that's important. But first of all, I want to say thank you for voting in favor of progress. That actually helps Lake Havasu a lot, as you well know, from all the projects that you guys see, some of which I've been a part of. Also, I think that this proposal has a positive effect on housing affordability in Lake Havasu. Obviously, these homes are not gonna be affordable, but by increasing inventory, blah, 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 we help the overall picture. So thank you for that as well. This property has been on the market in the past, I think this is important to remember. There have been the best economic headwinds that, excuse me, tailwinds that the United States has seen over the last few years. Never in the history of the United States has as much money been freely given out by the federal government to propel our economy. If there was a time that this was economically viable, the way that it's proposed, it probably would have been done, just like many other projects that we see around Lake Havasu. Something that's a point of clarification that I just wanted to point out, that I think is important for understanding of the public in general, is that you guys, as I understand it, don't make up these proposals. You guys don't bring forth ideas of what's gonna happen, you're just voting on what's presented to you. And so when there's comments about, well, you guys should go find a hotel that's gonna build out there, I, my understanding is that that's actually not the job of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Neither is it your job to find developers that will develop this, or to come up with ideas of how it's gonna be developed. You're simply voting on what's presented to you. And then, in the other side of the argument, I think that the residents on the island would like more clarity on what they're gonna get, they're concerned that it's not super clear. Maybe, as a option that would help this proposal be more clear, something could be added to the approval today that would specify minimum lot size, or, excuse me, the exact number of lots that will ever be there, or maybe this drawing, which I don't believe this drawing is a part of the approval today, I understand it to be part of the presentation, but not specifically part of the approval.
I believe that's correct.
And so maybe some of that stuff could be brought into play. I think that what's being asked here is very similar to the property that is Siena Villas, which is directly to the south of it. From what I'm seeing, it's actually nearly identical. However, it is very different from the property that would be to the east of it. I, I think the arguments that have been made focus a lot on the property to the east, which is Monticello, but not to the property that is across the open park area, Siena Villas to the south of it. So this is consistent with that. The other thing that I want to just touch on, Tom touched on this, but the space between Monticello, or the property to the east of this proposal and the proposal, there's that easement, which is a walk path, that does create some separation there, which has a lot of similarities to the separation that's created, although it's not the same size, on the south of the property. That being said, maybe there's something that could be adjusted to this proposal, or something that would ensure that the owners that are in Monticello are getting the space that they're hoping for. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Anybody else wish to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Esther Coletto. I just moved into this area back in March, and I'm a realtor out in California. One of the questions I asked my husband right now, I just said, back in California, when people, developers come in and they want to use the property for something that they want to build, homes or whatever, a lot of times, that includes a proposal to give something back to the city, or to give back to the community of residents. And I was thinking, what, what are they giving back here? I mean, is it just something you guys say yes, and it's a go, it sounds good, it's not breaking any rules, and whatever you want to do, but I just think, as the other community members were saying, it's really something special. I just started riding a bike around the perimeter of there, and I noticed that it, it was a very bumpy ride on my new bike, and I, I want to be able to walk and enjoy it, and I thought, well, gosh, somebody needs to come in and slurry coat this bike path that people are using, it's a main attraction for people who come to Havasu to walk around. And I thought, can they be responsible for maybe slurring coating or maintaining that, or adding something to the beauty of all the visitors that come in and walk around this beautiful island? I just thought maybe you could take that into consideration. In, in, in California, like, they actually make some of the main cross-sections that, that are up against the property developments, they, they take care of the landscaping and the, the watering, the sewage, and so that it's not a burden, but they're actually coming in to provide something for the community and make it easier for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Anybody else? You've already been to the microphone more than once.
One time.
Very quickly, and I'm gonna shut it down.
I, I want to reiterate with Wayland, and I never even thought about this before, is again, I use that walking path all the time, along, between Monticello and this development, and all the other housing tracks on the island have almost like a park-like setting or whatever between the housing tracks that separate us. And to reiterate on what the young lady here said, is that, is there, is, can we, if we approve this, can we designate some kind of a thirty or forty-foot walkway landscaped plan for the future? I mean, there's people that walk, I mean, there's people that drive to this island and park in the parking lot out front every day, the parking lot's full of people, that walk our walking path. And I think not only will it help or be a great source for the people of the island, but it's also a great walking area for the people that live in Havasu, that drive down to our beautiful island. And that one walking path right now is like unimproved, but we've accepted that as unimproved because the property next door is, is, is unimproved as of right now. But as a final design, we should put a dedicated landscape easement along that. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing portion to this item, bring it back to the table for the applicant's rebuttal to some of the points made here.
Thank you, Michael Gordon, again. I'm just gonna talk about a couple of these points and try and hopefully clarify a couple of things. Understand the comment, the last couple of comments about a buffer or, or a park or a path, and, I mean, just to be clear, this, this parcel, these parcels were part of the original master plan, to which that open space parcel where the path exists.
Was already.
Was already dedicated for that purpose. That is there to provide open space, park amenity, and a buffer between Siena Villas and this development. So asking for, you know, more onto this parcel would be asking for more out of Siena Villas or out of some of the other neighborhoods. So I don't think that's really applicable in this case. A lot of talk here about, you know, that this, that building, again, building a hotel here is, is viable, or people in the room would build it if, you know, they're willing to build it. I mean, I just wanted to say, I mean, we've, we've been involved in this parcel for a long time, there are a lot of brokers and realtors in the, in the audience today, including Mr. Nelson, who's been involved in this property to his own attest for years, and has done a lot out here, but nobody has brought real viable offers for a hotel to the ownership group here to consider. It just hasn't happened. In fact, we've represented a number of hotel developers in this city that are actively building hotels in this city right now. All of them got presented this parcel. It didn't fit their test, didn't fit their matrix, it didn't fit what they would want to build a hotel on. It was mentioned by Mr. Tuneman with city staff, and alluded to a few times in this room, but future hotels on the island will be built on the water on state land, it will happen eventually. And they're not gonna want to be here in the middle of the island if they have an opportunity to potentially be on the water, and that will happen in time. So at the end of the day, this thing has been tested and tried for a hotel and commercial development for whatever it is, ten, fifteen years, and it's never happened. So I, I don't think it's fair to say that that's there. Someone mentioned that, you know, well, let's put the single family there up against Monticello as a buffer. Well, the other side of the coin, the other side of the mouth from, was that we're okay with a hotel being right out our back door, but now we're not okay with a lower-density multifamily project being that buffer? Those two just don't equate, you know? A hotel use in your backyard versus a duplex multifamily use are two totally different things. So talk about that parcel, obviously, next. A lot of math being done here about density and stuff. I mean, simple math on eighteen acres, fifty-four units is fourteen thousand five hundred square feet. That does not take out the roadways and the right-of-ways that get removed from that calculation, hence the reason for ten thousand square foot lots. They're not all ten thousand, some are bigger than that, some are upwards of fifteen thousand, but they vary between ten thousand and on up, ten thousand being the smallest. Question about the plan, whether it's explicitly asked for or not, we're here today, we're, this is the same plan for the eighteen acres that was shown in the public meeting, we're willing to accept that there are fifty-four units in this plan, and we're willing to accept that this is the plan. This is not just something sketched up on a napkin, this is a fully engineered preliminary plat that's ready to be presented to, to city once we get through the entitlement process. So this plan, we are comfortable with this plan and the fifty-four unit maximum density being part of the PD approval, if that's what Planning and Zoning wants to put on this. And the last thing I'll close, well, I guess first of all, Luke, can you explain to me, if you can, the existing setbacks within the other residential developments on the island? My understanding is they're all unique and they all vary.
There are, right, the setbacks vary between the five different residential property out there. The larger lots are more standard, they have typically a twenty or twenty-five foot front, ten on the sides, and twenty or twenty-five in the back, that'd be like Monticello, or, I forget the marketing name for the one closest to the bridge, but those are, whatever, Viscano?
Viscana.
Viscana. So those are the, basically, the more traditional, single-family lots that have setbacks all around. Then there are the other three lots, other three developments that are more of a hybrid, some of them are called patio homes, where they may have a, a ten-foot setback on one side and zero on the other, and then there's some others that are connected, like, like townhome lots, where they could theoretically all but each other and have zero setbacks on the sides. So there's a range of setbacks, the front setbacks vary from twenty to twenty-five, I believe this, the rear setbacks vary from ten feet to twenty-five feet, depending upon the, each individual subdivision. So there are various setbacks out there. The one, the setbacks you're asking for here are, in my opinion, probably middle of the road as far as the setbacks that are existing out on the island right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and I think that's the, the point here, right? There's different neighborhoods on the island, they're all unique in their own way, shape, or form, they all have different sized lots, they all have different sized setbacks, they all have different sized homes, some are single-story, some are two-story. What we're proposing today, Luke, that's, Mr. Morris, that's a good way to put it, the density, the size, the setbacks are probably middle of the road compared to the different sized residential neighborhoods that are on the island currently.
And if I may interject, I apologize, it's hard to read this plan exactly, but it almost looks like it shows fifty-five lots here, so I just want to make it clear, it almost looks like this is, it says fifty-five right there. So just, just to be clear, if you're gonna try to use this and exhibit, I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay, I believe it's fifty-four that we're, we're doing, so.
Maybe, maybe the, the numbering sequence is out, and maybe it skipped out a number somewhere, but I just, just want to let you know, I see a fifty-five on this one right here.
Okay. Well, this development plan, if something's labeled wrong from a number standpoint, I apologize, we'll have to look closer at that, but this plan is what we're asking for approval on. The street configuration, the lot configuration, the size and the quantity of lots within the parameters that we've discussed. And to the setbacks, again, I mean, like was mentioned by someone here in the staff, Siena Villas has forty-five by eighty-five foot lots, wherever that is, thirty-six hundred square feet, Malibu, I'm sorry, Malibu. You know, you're talking thirty-six hundred to four thousand square foot lots with three foot side setbacks, ten foot in the rear. These are over fifty percent larger than, than any of that. So I think the request here for the type of lot, the size of lot, the setbacks is consistent with everything else that's going on, on the island, and fits within the neighborhood, so. That's all I had, thank you.
Any questions of the applicant by the commission? Mr. Laird?
Thank you. I'm just thinking, going back to all the engineering studies, and I know that our, our city staff, you know, all the invested, you know, entities here at the city have all said that they're good with everything, but I think just for the benefit of everyone, it might be good, I don't know if you could work with the city somehow to like create a summary that just describes how, that just sort of elaborates on the first responding, you know, the, the fire department issues, the police department issues, to put something in writing out there that people can reference. That's the key, yeah, thank you.
Well, I don't know if it's my position to state on behalf of the fire department and the first responders, I mean, I, I covered some of that early on in the presentation of what the public concerns were and what our feelings are on that. I think staff in the staff report has explained where the various departments within the city fall in regards to that, so. I mean, there's, it exists today, staff is supporting it, there's nothing I can really say or commit to other than, than that. It's kind of outside, I think, my purview, or our purview.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
All right, we are now at the table for staff's recommendations, and once again, clarification, this is on the merit of the zoning only.
And that is correct, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Based on the findings, the Development Review Committee recommends the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action Number 22-3554 for a planned development rezon for 34, excuse me, 340, 380, and 390 Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, Parcel A and portions of B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district and establishing a new residential estates planned development district, allowing the following exceptions. Minimum lot area reduced from 15,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Minimum set, side setbacks reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet, and rear yard setback reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet. And as reminded, this item will go with the City Council's January 10th meeting with the commission's recommendation. Thank you.
Okay, we are, any questions of staff by commissioners? We are now at the table for discussion and/or a motion by commissioners. Anybody? Ms. Medley?
I would like to just make a comment. Going back to the amendment itself, I think what we were looking at, or at least from my perspective and some of the other commissioners stated as well, it was a life safety issue. And I think that is a reasonable approach to make it a smaller density, hopefully. I do think rezoning is where we can make a bigger impact and try to raise the bar just a little bit. So I think that gives us that option, just to have that comment out there.
Anybody else? Ms. Ballard?
As far as, as far as this development-
As far as the development's concerned, I guess I would make a suggestion that the lots, the number of lots be maximized at 55 lots as shown on the plan, and that the setbacks would be agreeable to, with the exception on lots 26 and 25, which abut the Monticello project, that the rear setbacks on those property remain at 20 feet.
Any other comments? Ms. Zero?
Well, I have a question on that idea. So I'm trying to understand with the easement, the 20 to 25 feet would be in addition to?
No.
Okay, so it would include-
Be from the property line to the setback.
Including the, going over the easement as well.
If the easement is in excess of the depth of the setback, the easement would rule.
Okay. And my understanding is somebody said the easement was 20 feet back there? Does anybody know that?
Now, that easement back there is at least 20 feet, and it gets larger, much larger in areas.
It almost becomes a moot point on those two lots.
That's what I'm thinking, okay. Just wanted to make sure that was clear on that one, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I answer?
Go ahead, Mr. Gordon.
So, yeah, I mean, that easement, as you can see, is angled. It may be slightly less than 20 or 25 feet in that southern corner, but it's greater than that in the middle where the property line is between the two lots. So we do not have an issue if you wish to impose that standard setback restriction on the rear of those two properties.
My, my main reason-
Ms. Ballard?
Excuse me, my main reason is not so much with the easement that's there, but it's the fact that if you build a two-story house with a smaller rear setback, you're looking down into the backyard of the two houses that are behind these two lots. I think that would mitigate this issue perhaps, if those setbacks remained as they are, as an exception to the rest of the development.
Yeah, and we're okay with that. It's not going to be much different than the way the PUE impacts those two lots, so we have, we have no problem with that.
Point of clarification. On Lot 23, Mr. Morris, which is the rear property line?
Lot 23 here, so the front-
Excuse me, no. 23, keep going, keep going, right there.
Lot 25 here.
25, I'm sorry.
So the front is the front, that's easy. Sides come off the two sides. And then on this, I would typically call two rears because it's a continuation of these rear lots and a continuation of these lots over here. So on both 25 and 26, I would call these fronts, sides, and then rears along the perimeter of the development.
You can with that kind of setback on both sides? Or both way around?
No, thank you for asking that and clarifying that. The request and the reason for the request is the frontage against Monticello. So it would be on 25, it would be the rear portion that abuts Monticello. The other portion abuts the open space parcel, consistent with everything else along that southern property line. I don't know how you write that into condition, but it would be the eastern portion of the rear setback.
So state again what you just said.
So the standard is, Luke, Mr. Morris, 25 feet, right, is the standard setback?
Standard setback in the rear is 20 feet for RE.
20 feet, an RE, okay. So the applicant is comfortable with the setback, the rear setback that abuts Monticello on lots 25 and 26 being the standard 20 feet?
And not the-
Not the portion of the rear setback that abuts the open space parcel.
Or the RMPD parcel on 26.
Correct. So it's just the eastern portion of those two lots.
The point being is that-
That abuts Monticello.
That extra 20 feet on those two sides, the part that abuts the open space and the part that abuts the RMPD takes another bigger chunk out of those lots.
Correct. So thank you for asking the question. What we're talking about, I think, is the impact to Monticello. So we're comfortable with that having a standard 20-foot rear setback on those two property lines right there that Mr. Morris was pointing to. Be the eastern portion of both of those two lots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are still at the table for discussion and/or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Ms. Ballard?
I'll make a motion and request that the planned development rezon for 340, 380, and 390 Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, Parcel A and portions of Parcels B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district MU-NPD and establishing a new residential estates planned development district R-E-PD, allowing the following exceptions. Minimum lot area reduced from 15,000 square feet to 10,000 square feet. Side setback reduced from 10 feet to 5 feet, and rear setback reduced from 20 feet to 15 feet, with the exception of lots 26 and 25, that rear property that abuts the Monticello development, the setback remain at 20 feet, and with additional requirement that the maximum lot to be developed in this development is fixed at 55.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Ballard, excuse me, and a second by Ms. Zero, to approve Land Use Action Number 22-3554 with staff's recommendations. And Ms. Ballard, state the rest of what you were adding to it.
With the additional requirement that lots 26 and 25, the rear portion of those lots that adjoining the Monticello development, that that rear setback be, remain at 20 feet, and with additional requirement that the development is maxed at 55 lots.
Okay, what she said. All right, any further discussion on that motion? Ms. Wilson?
Can the applicant clarify, is the walking path any portion of this property?
No. The answer was no. Any further discussion on this motion? All right, let's call for the question.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, we have been at this now for three hours. I suggest we take a five-minute pause for the cause. Not me.
My office thinks I died.
Yeah, mine too. I'm not even looking at my phone, I'm sure it's blowing up. All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's continue. The next item on today's agenda is ID 22-3555. This is a request for a planned development rezon for 350 Beach Comer Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, portions of Parcels B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district and establishing a new multiple-family planned development district, reducing the maximum density from 20 units per acre to eight units per acre, and the minimum density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre. Mr. Morris, your presentation. Oh, you weren't even there. Just in time.
Make my grand entrance, thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The subject property consists of portions of Parcels B, C1, and C2 that together measure approximately five acres, and they're vacant and undeveloped. They're located on the island at the northwest corner of Grand Island Estates Development near the western end of Beach Comer Boulevard. The subject property is currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood planned development. The property to the north is vacant Arizona state land and zoned island body beach. Property to the west is currently zoned mixed-use neighborhood PD, but has been requested to be rezoned to residential estates PD. The properties to the south and the east are zoned RE PD and developed with single-family homes, some vacant lots, and the Grand Island Estates Park. Here's the existing proposed, existing development plan that has been approved. That was approved in 1994 for Grand Island Estates. It consists of five developed single-family residential subdivisions, a park, and the subject lots outlined in red. The currently approved development for the subject properties include a 70-foot tall hotel resort with approximately 225 rooms, 45 residential casita units, and approximately 50,000 square feet of commercial area for the combined Parcels A, B, and C. The applicant has also submitted a separate request for a general plan amendment for the property to allow the proposed residential zoning district. The applicant asks to amend the city's general plan from resort-related to resort residential to facilitate the development, and this planned development is now the second step in this phase to allow the residential uses. Let's go back up here. The request is for five acres and is proposed to be multiple-family development with a maximum of eight dwellings per acre, which would result in a maximum of 40 units on the, in this development area. There's a separate submittal for the abutting property of 18 acres to include single-family residential. These areas are part of the existing Grand Island Estates planned development, but are no longer included in the development agreement for Grand Island Estates. Here's the, again, the table showing the different uses. The existing uses outlined in red, that would eliminate those uses of the resort casitas and the resort hotel and replace them with multiple-family residential, a maximum of 40 units. The applicant is asking for two exceptions from the RM zoning district. The RM zoning district allows up to 20 units per acre. However, the applicant is asking to limit the development to no more than eight units per acre. They are also asking for the, that the minimum density be reduced from 10 units per acre to four units per acre. That four units per acre is similar to the residential densities in the Grand Island Estates Development. Staff supports the proposed exceptions. Again, Development Services staff, Public Works, Fire and Police Management staff met and reviewed the proposed amendment, have no concerns about the development. Is determined that the project is not anticipated to have a negative impact on the existing access to the island or to police or fire response times. There's also adequate capacity for sewer and water service for the development. That concludes staff's presentation. Open any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, are there any questions of staff by commissioners? Hearing none, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Michael Gordon with Desert Land Group. I'll just jump right back into kind of where we left off. First of all, I wanted to clarify a statement I made in the last presentation when I was asked the question about whether the path is on the parcel or not. I was, I thought that the question was related to the southern property line, where the open space parcel is and the path is. That's what I was referring to. Apparently, the question was related to the eastern property line, the back of those two lots, and now in question on the back, on the eastern property line of the parcel we're talking about. Yes, there is an existing path there that is technically on this property. There is an existing public utility easement, an access easement that is already recorded and in place over the top of that area, protecting it. It's a minimum of 20 feet wide. It gets wider, like we talked about, where it jogs out into those two parcels down there, and it kind of angles following that eastern property line. That existing path that is a connection from the open space park out to the island path is on the property of these two parcels.
It is contained on the property?
Yes, correct.
And what would be the disposition of that?
It will stay there. It's, that whole area, that whole dotted line you see on the eastern property line and the angle on the two lots we talked about is already recorded as a, as an access easement, which is why the path is there and is required to be there, and a public utility easement so that the utility companies have the, they have the rights to run utilities through that easement as well. So that will stay there. Now, it's on private property, so it will stay in a public utility and access easement on these different lots that get developed.
Thank you. Ms. Ballard?
I have a question then. Would the owners of lots 25 and 26 be able to build their rear property wall on the property line? And would, in doing so, wouldn't that eliminate access to the public use of the path?
Yeah, they won't be able to restrict access through there, so they won't be able to build across that and block the path. No, they won't be able to do that.
So you're saying the property line, as it's shown on here, would normally be the property line where a resident can build their wall, but you're telling that the path is on the outside of that?
The path is on the inside of that.
Is on the inside, so therefore, if I owned that property and I built a wall around my property, the public would not be able to access that path.
They wouldn't let you build the wall.
Correct. The easement, because it's a public access easement, would restrict. Anytime someone comes in, as I'm sure you're aware, to build on a public utility easement or an existing access easement, it goes through a whole encroachment process with the city. So if an owner were to come in and say, I want to build a wall here, it's in the public utility easement, it's in this access easement, that's going to go to all the utility companies for them to either agree or not agree, and it's going to go to the city to either agree or not agree. Because of the nature of the easement, the city would not allow a wall to be built across that restricting access.
But however, the, the wall on the rear of the property is, is well beyond the easement area.
It's on the eastern edge of the easement, and it's the common property line with the Monticello properties. More than likely, you know, the Monticello properties will build a wall protecting their backyard and enclosing their backyard on that property line, but these properties won't be able to put fences or walls across this easement, restricting that access. It will have to stay open.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, absolutely. So as we've talked, this is the five-acre piece in the northeast corner of the property that is being proposed for the RM PD zoning designation. Again, going away from the resort and the casitas that were approved there. The original development plan showed casitas kind of along this property line and the resort a little further in. This, this use that we've talked about, the plan, the concept plan, development plan that's on the screen, showing lots that I mentioned before, 15 lots in the 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range, with the restrictions that Mr. Morris talked about, about density being restricted to eight units per acre. When you go and try and develop these parcels, they, you're not going to get anything more than a duplex with one common wall on these properties, consistent with probably less dense than the casitas that were, are currently approved that could get scattered along this edge of the property. Again, we're, we're here in front of you to ask for this zoning designation for this parcel. It would be a small cluster of multifamily units. Again, with limited density, maximum of 40, 15 parcels, like I described. Reality is, it'll be more like 30 when it's developed. And this general development plan is what we're willing to accept, with the caveat that with the easements that are there and such, as we work through those easements with the utility companies in the city, these property lines may shift around a little bit to line up with easements or to meet the needs or requests of the utility companies or the city. But in general, this development plan, a circular loop, 15 parcels, with the restrictions discussed, is what we are willing to, or requesting, I should say, get adopted today. Are there any questions I can answer regarding this?
Ms. Ballard? Ms. Ballard.
Because the current zoning is a maximum density from 20 units to eight units, if that's the maximum density, why do you need us to approve a request if you're only going to build 10 units?
Mr. Morris can probably answer that question, but the zoning code has both a minimum and a maximum in the code, so we're, because of the lower density, we're asking for the lower on the high end as well as the modification on the low end.
If I may elaborate, so the RM zoning district has a minimum density of 10 units per acre and a maximum of 20 units per acre. Their request, it was reduced that maximum from 20 down to eight. So the eight units per acre is less than the minimum that would normally be, the minimum for the RM is 10 units per acre. So they're requesting that the maximum be less than the minimum, so there, we're asking to remove that, move the minimum down to more appropriate four units per acre. So now they'll be within four to eight units per acre.
Okay, and understood. One last question to follow up on my last question. So you're saying that the, the wall that would go around the back of this, there would be no wall around the back of this development, so the people living in those would have no, no fenced backyard?
The wall, if built by the owners or by the development, would follow that easement line, that dashed easement line that exists. The wall will not be able to be out into that easement.
All right.
So that will maintain that open corridor where the path exists.
But that reduces the size of the lots as presented.
It doesn't reduce the size of the lots because the property line is still out where the thick dark line is, so the size, square footage of the lots remain the same, but the buildable area of that lot gets restricted a little bit.
I got it, I understand.
Any other questions of the applicant?
Can you remind me, based on the long meeting here, what are the setbacks for multifamily?
Mr. Morris?
RM setbacks have 15 feet in the front and rear and five feet on the sides.
And in this case, where the path is, that's a 20-foot easement, so the, the PUE and the path and the access easement is actually more restrictive than the, the typical 15-foot rear setback.
Any other questions? Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on the rezoning of this five-acre parcel? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Tom Staben. Earlier, and I apologize, sir, Desert Land Group, when you were first going with the first go-around on this five-acre parcel, he volunteered that the first row of houses along Monticello were going to be at height of maximum 18 feet. So I would hope that he volunteered that if it was approved, he would go 18 feet as a maximum height. So I hope when you do your, reading off of your approval or disapproval of the thing, that one of the chair, Commissioners will say that as part of this approval, he has to stay with that 18-foot that he approved of earlier. Thank you. No, not yet. And Mrs. Ballard?
I drew a little map.
A little map to show you what we're talking about.
Is that at the break? This is the wrought iron fence or block wall behind Monticello. This would be the easement area of, was it 10 or 20 feet or?
20 feet.
Yeah, 20 feet. So theoretically, these new houses are going to have a wall 20 feet off of this. Now, to clarify, your question is, if it's 20 feet, and we go with a 20-foot setback, this house would be built on the wall. If, if we, if we use this as the setback, this house could be built here in this area. And I don't think anyone really understood that with any clarity early, that's why I wanted to point that out, is that, that 15-foot, I think, should be off of the easement line itself versus off the property line from Monticello. Does anybody have any question on that, how?
That is?
Nope.
Okay. And again, just for my clarity, what is the, the setback here that they're asking for?
They're not asking for any exceptions for the setback, so the setbacks are 15 feet in the front and the rear and five feet on the sides.
And I would ask for a 20 or 25-foot setback, again, like Mrs. Ballard asked for, along, because my, my actual property is that corner, that's why I'm being kind of particular.
It's already a given that they can't build any closer than 20 feet because of the easement, they can't build into the easement, so that's already a 20-foot setback from the property line.
Yeah, but if they build the, but see, this is why I wanted to clarify.
I understood, I understood what you said. I get it.
Build off that?
I understand.
Easement, they've got the 20-foot, so to speak, but it's still on my property line, basically.
Chances are, the developer's not going to want to do that.
Pardon me?
Chances are, any developer is not going to want to do that.
Well, everything changes, and that's why I wanted to clarify, and hopefully, if somebody will speak up even especially about the 18-foot height, because the last thing I want to do is, is have a townhome in my backyard that's 30 feet tall. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Yes, he is correct. I forgot to mention that when I spoke, but what I said earlier is correct. Those five parcels on the eastern edge adjoining Monticello, we are okay with the restriction of 18 feet on those parcels. So that is correct. We're happy to have that be part of this approval. And just to answer that question, I mean, as, as we talked about, the typical setback would be 15, this easement's already forcing it to be 20, which is actually the exact same easement that the homes on the other side of the property line are at. Those homes even have the ability to encroach into that setback with an accessory structure up to five feet away from the property line. These, these properties are not going to have that luxury because it's a public utility easement. It's 20 feet that i- is lost, they, they aren't going to be able to do anything with it. So the odds of a structure being there are pretty minimal. If it is a structure, it might be part of a back of a garage or something, that a wall or something is coming off of, but they're going to want, these, these units are going to want a buffer and a barrier from that public access way that cuts through there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to speak on this item? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, my name is Wayland Gates. So this particular development, it seems, to summarize what I gather from all the stuff that I can put together, is essentially what we're asking for is multifamily that's allowed to be built higher, because duplexes would be R2 or something, not multifamily. So essentially, you get slightly different setbacks in the rear and the front, but you can build taller buildings. So that's, I just feel like in layman's terms, that may help people in the audience or you. These setbacks are an interesting thing, and I think that it's being lost, so I'm going to just go over it again. No offense to anybody here. Typically, you have a utility easement, which is, doesn't really affect the use of the property, as somebody can walk on it, or they can build a fence around it, let their dog there, they can landscape it, there's a number of things that you can do, there's limits to that and whatever. This is a lot different than that. This is actually more like a roadway that goes through the back of this property.
How about an alley?
An alley, there you go. So if we have a setback that's 20 feet from the rear property line, while that does create the ability for them to build a structure that is up to that 20-foot line, which is 20 feet away, or excuse me, turns out that that would be 45 feet away from where Mr. Staben could build the back of his home, there's essentially this alleyway that's fully situated on the property in question, which means that we're treating this as an alleyway, the home that's being built is being built directly on that alleyway. My opinion is that that doesn't serve the purpose or nature of the path that follows that side of the property. I think that there should be more of a setback there that pushes whatever development that's going to be there further away from that. I actually feel that should have been done on the other one, except because of the angles, it kind of dictates that that's going to be the case. But on this particular piece, that's not the case, you only have 20 feet. To make it more accurate, to match the Monticello one, it would be 45-foot setback, which obviously is a ton more, so I think that helps visualize how different that would be if, which I'm not proposing that's the right number, I'm just saying that there's a huge difference. This is a path that's existing, that's used by everybody, in, in fact, is landscaped, I think by the city, that is already there, that's fully on this property. So 20 feet takes it to where they can build the building envelope right to that line, and I don't think that is a, a wise direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chairman and Commission members, Frank Hayes again. Okay, addressing this specific project, in my opinion, this is the worst possible use of this land. As, as been brought up before, this is like the, the jewel of Lake Havasu, right near the London Bridge, the second most visited tourist attraction in Arizona. So let's put high-density housing on it, right? So somebody mentioned that, you know, I've been using the island as a assembly occupancy, and it's really not because it's not a structure. Well, this, this is a structure, okay? And the problem is, you can't really effectively regulate the occupancy load that's going to be in this type of a, of a development. So if you look at, historically speaking, you know, if you look at the Nautico Inn as an example, how many people are going to be in a room over the weekend or whatever it might be? Well, it's supposed to be, you know, probably four, but we know that's not true, it could be 10, 12, who knows? They're having a big party and they're all sleeping on the, on the, on the floor, whatever they are. But this is a really bad idea. It's, it's like, what I think about this is, when I think about Long Beach, I think about certain parts of the city, the inner city, where what they've done is, they've demolished current beautiful houses that were there for years, that were beautiful, they bulldoze them down, they build what we call a garden-style apartment that has 18 units in it, and it's really skinny and have subterranean parking and, you know, on a routine basis, we'd go on responses and there'd be like, oh my God, there's, you know, 10 people in this one unit. So, you know, your consideration should be, this is like probably the most beautiful, valuable property, you have an entire city left, and you're going to put high-density housing there? Bad move. I want to address what Desert Land Group representative keeps, keeps talking about, the contradictory comments about different people saying, "Well, look, we're making it so much less dense, how would they, why would they want this hotel?" Well, that's not the real issue. The real issue is access. We're talking about Second Bridge, we're talking about more ability to get in and out off the island, regardless of what's ultimately built. So I wanted to clarify that. You know, and, and what's, what's interesting about this project is, it's really interesting because all it is is a block, right? And there's the parcels. They've developed, you know, these lot sizes for the other 18 acres, but, you know, the comments have been made, well, the developer really doesn't really want to invest any money because they don't know if it's going to get approved. It's very untransparent whatsoever, and, you know, these people that are, are building right next to it, they have no real guarantee or know what's going to be there. You know, it's been, it's been said now, it's not, not going to be over 18 feet, and it's going to be this maybe, or maybe that. So there's no real clarification or transparency, and I think that's totally wrong. And all these decisions so far, and probably this one, you're, you're not taking the concerns, the desires of the community have been clearly dictated to you. There's 500 signatures of those opposing it on the island, everybody here, except for a few, who said, "Hey, this is progress, I totally disagree, no progress is here." And you're basically just making up your own mind that you're going to prove it based upon, I'm not quite sure what's in your minds. You're, you're thinking you're doing a good thing here, where you're using the most valuable, beautiful property, and using, and you're losing a golden opportunity to develop it into something beautiful, and it's going to be great for all the citizens of, of Lake Havasu, and that's not it right there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishes to speak on this item?
Hi, Greg Clark, Trinity Land Development. I'm going to ask if you consider approving this, you ask the developer to deed that easement to the city, add it to parcel G, which is the park, and then your setbacks will be standard for all the remainder of the parcels. You wouldn't have to have any exceptions. That would define it, because right now, as they're the property owners, who's going to maintain the path? What if they challenge it in the future, saying, "Hey, I've owned this land, someone got hurt on the path, who's responsible for that? Who's liable for that injury?" So I ask that if you do approve this, have the developer deed that 20 acres for the path to the city, they're already maintaining the park, and then keep standard setbacks for everything else. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak on this item?
Chad Nelson, NELSON. I think that's like kind of the, like I said, I think this has been moving in a progression over the years, and it's getting there, but I just don't think this plan is ready for approval. One of the things that was missed, and I think all parties kind of discovered it during the break, was that the, there is a, a use path that goes through there, there's people on the island that walk it every day, and it is on the, in the property that you guys approved just before this, but it's not on the map. And that probably was a mistake. And on this piece, it's not on the map either, and I think, I think they're trying to work with everybody to, to, to get it right. However, you know, I just don't think it's quite ready yet. And I understand all parties' opinions, but when it comes to an approval like this in an area like this, not having that detailed information on the map is partially why it was missed in the last item, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Ms. Ballard has a question.
Chad, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Are you aware, or do you know, because of this path that's there, that it's on the current property, but it's not going to be usable by the people that own these townhomes or these property? Who pays the taxes for that 20 feet?
The, the property owners probably would, I think.
Absolutely.
I think Mr. Clark just made the, the best suggestion would be to, because the city currently maintains it. I think it'd be, it would be best to deed it to the city, like all the other developments did, to make the 5K walking path all the way through. But, you know, I wouldn't want to impose anything that they wouldn't agree on, but it is something that probably wasn't taken into consideration by, by all parties up until today.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon, you were coming back.
Yeah, I just wanted to respond to those comments. I mean, as I alluded to on the front end of this conversation, the comments that were made, we were fully aware that there is a path on the eastern property line that is on this property. When I was asked the question in the last, on the last item, again, I thought we were talking about the southern property line where it is out into the park parcel. And I just wanted to state that if, if this being a parcel dedicated to the public, to this park, all those things, was the intent of the original development, it would already be there, it would already be there as part of the other park dedications and the other open space that got deeded as separate parcels. There is a restrictive easement in there, it's not something that's hidden, it's recorded, it's on this map, it's on everything we talked about, it says PUE and access easement per Grand Island Estates, so that easement's been there, it was part of the original plan, and it will always be there, and it will always be free for access through there. So I don't think that's really an issue at this point, like we talked about before. I think it's a little unfair to say, okay, okay, that we have already, we've already walked away from 20 feet, we want you to walk away from another 15 or 20 feet, when in reality, there's going to be a barrier there, whether it's a wall or the back of a garage or a combination of the two, there's going to be a barrier there, and that corridor is going to be, and maintain and be, and stay open. So I think the intent of what's there is still there, and it will always be there.
Question.
Ms. Ballard.
Therefore, the person that owns one of Therefore, the person that owns one of these townhomes, even though they do not have use of that 20 feet, because it's not being rededicated some other way, those residents are paying the taxes on that piece that they have no use of.
That is correct. This easement sits on these parcels. These owners will pay the taxes on the parcel that the public gets to use for public access and easement. Yes.
This is for Ms. Ballard. It'd be the same as you own a home, and your property line goes down into a wash. You pay the property taxes for that unused property. Same thing.
I currently live in a development that has the same issue. However, the wall that abuts the property I live in from the golf course has an easement area between that wall and our, into our property line that is owned by the golf course, because it's an easement area, but we pay the taxes on it.
Everybody who has an easement on their property pays the taxes for that property.
That is correct. Other questions for me?
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion to this meeting, or to this issue, and bring it back to the table for staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. Based on the findings, Development Review Committee recommends the planning commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for Land Use Action Number 22-3555 for a planned development rezone for 350 Beachcomber Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, portions of parcels B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district, and establishing a new multiple-family planned development district, reducing the maximum density from 20 units per acre to eight units per acre, and the minimum density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre. And again, as a reminder, this item will go to the City Council's December, January 10th meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions of staff by the Commissioners? We are at the table for discussion and/or a motion by the Commissioners. Ms. Zero.
I'll make, excuse me, I'll make a motion on ID 22-3555. The motion is to approve a request for a planned development rezone for 350 Beachcomber Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, portion of parcels B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district, and establishing a new multiple-family planned development district, reducing the maximum density from 20 units per acre to eight units per acre, and the minimum density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre. And with a caveat that the two, I don't know what direction that is, the two lots on the end.
The eastern most lots of budding Monticello.
Yeah, the two eastern lots budding Monticello will be no higher than 18 feet.
There's five lots.
Five lots, or no, the five lots are no higher than 18 feet.
Have a height limit of 18 feet.
Yep.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Looking for a second. This motion will die without a second.
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Zero and a second by Ms. Wilson to approve ID number 22-3555 with staff's recommendations and the inclusion of a 18-foot height limit for the five easternmost lots of the five-acre parcel. We're at discussion. Anybody want to discuss it? Okay, let's call for the question.
Motion fails with three yes and four no.
Okay, last item on today's agenda is a call to the public.
Mr. Chair, there is an opportunity if somebody would like to make another motion, just because one fails.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It would be helpful if you provide some recommendation to the City Council. Otherwise, all you're going to provide them is a motion that failed. And I don't know if that clearly, I don't know if you, I can't walk away knowing what that means. I don't know what your recommendation is.
Okay. We have the opportunity here, as mentioned by council, to propose another motion. Is there another motion to be made? Anybody? I can't make one. I'm the chair. Ms. Gary.
I don't know how to take your silence. I mean, if the desire of the Commission is that you don't recommend approval of the rezon, then you can make a motion to not recommend approval. However, because everybody is silent, I'm not sure what the holdup is. So you're not providing any information whatsoever to the City Council for them to make a decision. They're going to have to make a decision, so you probably need to speak. I know that it's a highly controversial item, but you probably need to maybe share your thoughts of why you voted against the first item, or what you're, and maybe try to talk it through a little bit.
I make a motion. I make a motion.
Ms. Ballard.
That we reject the request for a planned development rezone for 350 Beachcomber Boulevard, Grand Island Estates, portions of parcels B, C1, and C2, removing the property from the original mixed-use neighborhood planned development district MU-NPD, and establishing a new multiple-family planned development district R-MPD, reducing the maximum density from 20 units per acre to eight units per acre, and the minimum density from 10 units per acre to four units per acre.
We have a motion by Ms. Ballard to deny motion, or ID number 22-3555. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ballard and a second by Mr. Diaz to deny ID number 22-3555. Any further discussion? Ms. Zero.
Okay, I'm trying to understand where you're coming from. Based on all the four hours of discussion that we've had so far, there's been no pushback on a multi-plan unit. So what's the concern that we have with approving this with a reduced down, which we've been talking all morning about, no more than the 85 units with the homes and this together for the density that's in the community? So what's the concern that suddenly popped up with this?
I'm just responding to the vote that did not pass with the original motion. I'm responding that we submit a new motion reflecting that disapproval by interjecting that we do not, we do not approve the request for the planned development.
Okay, I understand that, but I'm trying to understand why, because I need to vote on this, on this motion, and I don't understand the reasoning. I guess it's like, what's the reasoning behind the motion that's making it correct?
So I can add to that. So for my personal reason is that the last parcel had kind of a plan. It was laid out. We actually agreed upon that plan, okay? Now, there were some recent things that came up at the tail end. I'm not a quick thinker, but maybe if we went back, or the developer went back and just looked at that area, and maybe took the walkway into consideration, maybe just reconfigured, it'd give us some more information than it is possible to have a home right up to that walking path, right? Maybe there is another viable option, but nobody's looked at it, because we just figured this out within the last 10 minutes, per se. That maybe there is another way of developing that parcel and fit the needs of the developer and what, just another option, that's all.
So to understand, you're saying that your concern is that when they put the multi-units in, you're anticipating they're going to build these right up to the walking path?
Yes, ma'am.
And so there's going to be a wall?
Yes, ma'am.
Can we ask the applicant?
We can bring the developer back, the representative.
What is the plan with the units that are going in?
Well, as I mentioned before, the units aren't designed fully in terms of what they're going to be.
Let me interrupt you there for a moment. First off, and Kelly, excuse me, Ms. Gary, correct me if I'm wrong. We're voting on the zoning, whether the property merits the zoning. Typically, on a zoning vote, you do not have to have the plan in place. You don't have to have the full development. It's just, does the property warrant the rezon or not? The property will then, Luke, correct me, will come back before the Commission with the development plan, the PD, and then will go ahead and approve or disapprove.
Well, that's an interesting question. So this is moving forward as a PD, a planned development, with exception for the density. There was no request for exceptions or special rules for setbacks. So if it was approved, and it went forward, and then the City Council approved the rezoning, the next step for the development would be, the developer would be a subdivision plat. And that subdivision plat then would look at things like the easements and those sorts of questions.
Easement, setbacks, et cetera.
And those would come into play during your review of the subdivision for the property.
And that would come back before us.
That would come back before the planning commission.
And we would at that time say, you may not build right up to that property line.
You could ask for additional setbacks or something on that plat. That could be something that the developer could apply or could show on the plat, but they could, they could enforce larger setbacks voluntarily if they wanted to, but they wouldn't be able to encroach into the minimum setbacks that are established.
The point being is this, this Commission has voted multiple times on zoning changes without development plans in place, based on the fact that that development plan's going to come back before us.
Yes, they've also, you've also seen full-blown plans for planned development.
And we have seen those as well. That is correct. So I'm sorry, Mr. Gordon, I interrupted you.
No, no, it's okay. I think those are good, valid points. I mean, we started with the request that Mr. Morris outlined. We added the restriction to limit the height on the five parcels on the end. We have a, we have a development plan that's been on the screen today that shows 15 parcels in a loop road configuration, lots that are in the 10,000 to 15,000 square foot range. The final preliminary plat and exact lines of those 15 parcels aren't 100% in stone because of the easements and the study and the work that needs to be done to narrow that down. But we are okay adopting that general development plan, if you will, showing 15 parcels with these restrictions, so long as those lot lines can shift to line up with easements and restrictions that are going to come as part of the review of the plat with both staff and the Commission. So if that helps the Commission be comfortable with what this is going to become, we are comfortable having that general development plan be part of this action, along with the reduction in density, along with the restriction on the height for those eastern parcels, and help provide some more clarity to what can be, can ultimately be built. That narrows it down pretty tight to what could be built on this five acres. So if that's helpful to reconsider your motion, I would ask you to do so and include that general development plan for the 15 lots in your motion.
Where we are right now, we're still discussing, where we are right now is, we have to clear out this motion first in order to do anything else. We have to act on this motion. I personally, again, I don't have a problem with this. It's the right thing to do, I believe. There's been a lot of statements made here about what should be done with that property, but that's from people that don't own the property and don't have the financial risk for this property. By not zoning this correctly and allowing this to go forward, we may be, like I said earlier in a previous discussion, condemning this property to lie fallow and not, not be able to be developed. So I think we are on the right track to do, to rezon this, but I think there was a little bit of confusion about some of the conditions and where they should be with their presentation.
And if I may add, may I add to one thing regarding the path? So there is a 20-foot PUE in place, or an access easement in place for that path. The path isn't 20 feet wide, okay? It varies, it moves around within that easement. So a house, a wall, a structure will not be built flush up against the path all the way along that edge. And on top of that, you know, it varies. I would say it's generally in the middle of that 20-foot easement. The properties in Monticello that have a 20-foot setback also do have the luxury, like I mentioned before, of accessory structures. So a casita, a covered shade structure that's next to their pool, whatever the case might be, being within five feet of that rear property line. So the impact, and I haven't seen, I don't know exactly what's built or what we've built there, but I would almost guarantee that there will be some accessory structures around swimming pools and other things in the back of those properties that will put vertical structures within five feet of this path easement as well. So the impacts of those homes, the impacts of these homes are going to vary along this edge, but regardless, there is a 20-foot dedicated space there that is larger than the general setbacks to begin with. And I think when it's built out, we'll find an open corridor that is there forever for the enjoyable use of the public, and I don't think you're going to see anything that's unsightly or negatively impacting that path.
We are still at the table for discussion. Anybody? Mr. Lear?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if it would help the Commission if we just, I don't know, if we tabled the decision and had them come back in a month or two with a more delineated true general development plan, showing the path, showing proposed walls and landscaped areas, and just more information to really make a decision on.
If I were, and I'm just putting myself in the shoes of the property owner, developer, whatever, that's just one more hurdle that we wouldn't normally have to.
Do you own the property?
We're at discussion here, folks. We've already had our hearing.
And correct me if I'm wrong, based on what we just talked, they'll have to come.
Ms. Wilson.
I'm sorry. They'll have to come back with the subdivision.
They do have to come back before us. And it will be a public hearing.
Are they not able to just build on one lot after they get a rezon? Sorry, just to interject.
I'm sorry. The public hearing, the public hearing is over. We are at discussion for a motion.
There's been a motion. We have a motion.
We're still discussing. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's call for the question.
Excuse me, I've got a question.
Nope, we're done. Sorry.
If you're going to do it again.
Sir? Sir, you're out of order.
Would you mind clarifying what the motion is?
Let's clarify the motion. A yea vote will be to deny the motion. A nay vote. Ms. Gary?
Yeah, so it's going to be to recommend to the City Council that they not approve the rezon request.
Right.
So that would be a yea note, and a no vote would basically be, you don't agree that it should go to the City Council with a recommendation, basically of disapproval.
I just want to make it perfectly clear, because we had this before. So if you vote yes right now, you're voting to deny it. So you have to vote yes to deny it. Okay.
Motion carries five to two.
Are you good with that?
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on today's agenda is the call to the public. Anybody in the audience can come and address the Commission on any item whatsoever. We may not respond, but you may take the lectern. State your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Debbie Young. I just have a question for clarification. Luke, maybe you can answer this. Since that was denied, what is the zoning on that parcel?
Are we allowed to respond?
No, I'm sorry. And just because call the public, we aren't allowed to have a two-way dialogue, but after the meeting, absolutely, Luke can discuss that with you.
Well, because it seems to me that none of them knew the answer to that either, so the denial, and I think that that seems like some of the.
We know the answer.
You know the answer, I just can't say it.
But we cannot say it legally. Sorry.
Okay. We'll talk.
Anybody else that wishes to address the Commission? Please come forward, state your name for the record.
Hi, my name's Monique Hayes, and I just, my comment is that it's really unfortunate that you did not hear the voices of all the people in this room and the 500 people plus that signed that petition that are against this project. So it's, it's really a shame that we're going to lose the character of the island resort living that many in this room bought and paid for their homes.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. I'll close the call to the public. Future meetings, Mr. Morris.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you. We do have a meeting scheduled for December 21st, and we do have items for that date. So December 21st, we'll see you in two weeks then.
You do have a meeting?
We do.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned.